Troy, this is Chris in the hearing room. Can you hear us? Troy, this is Chris in the hearing room. Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me as well?
Sure can.
Great, thank you.
Hi CJ, can you hear me now?
I can. Was that Brad Rubenstein?
Yes, yes it is.
Okay, appreciate it Brad. Thank you so much.
No problem, thank you.
Hello Commissioners, this is Troy, your virtual host. We are live and recording.
Good afternoon and welcome. Call to order, the Board of County Commissioners Land Use in Public Hearing for Tuesday, December 8, 2020. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everyone. We do have a quorum at our in-person meeting in the hearing room and online virtually. In the rooms, Commissioner Thomas and myself, Commissioner Partridge. And joining us from Washington DC virtually is Commissioner Abe Layden. Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
And Mr. Ingalls, do we have certification of our agenda today?
We do, Mr. Chair. There are several items on your agenda. I'll go through the notices. Items 2A, B, and C did not require any specialized notice. Items 3A required mailed notice to taxing entities and property owners, as well as published notice. That was accomplished on November 12 and November 12. Item 3B was properly noticed prior to November 5 and continued until today. Item 3C required mailed, posted, and published notice. That was accomplished on October 29, October 31, and October 29 respectively. And finally, item 3D required published notice, which was accomplished, it says December 8, 2020, so published today. You have proper notice and jurisdiction on all items on your agenda.
Thank you, sir. Do any of the Commissioners have any disclosure for any item on our agenda today?
I have none, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
And I have none, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Very well, thank you. And I have none. Brings us to our first item, 2A, Castle Pines Village filing 14A, First Amendment, project file SB 2020-054. Presenting for staff, Chief Planner Matthew Jacobowski. Matthew, as you're working through there, and I think you may be able to expedite this one a little bit. And if you feel you can expedite that, that'd be great. And I will certainly then ask the applicant if there's any further they would like to add when we come to that point. But I think you may be able to expedite a little bit, Matthew. So feel free to work on it on the fly.
Absolutely, thank you, Commissioner Partridge. Matt Jacobowski, representing Planning Services, presenting Castle Pines Village filing 14A, First Amendment replat, filing number SB 2020-054. This is a replat of existing lot 623 in Castle Pines Village in the planned development. Matt Buster, the applicant representative of David Evans &amp; Associates, is here as well if you have any further questions. This is a 10.8 acre site. And as I mentioned, it's a replat of a super block lot into two lots. The applicant followed all procedures required by the Douglas County zoning resolution. There were no comments from abutting property owners or members of the public on this particular application. And the applicant has provided responses to all referral comments that were received during the process. This is a view of the property, but more importantly, a view of the actual site on Country Club Drive in Castle Pines Village. It is surrounded by some residential development and other properties that are being platted and developed. This is an exhibit that shows the tract A on the bottom, which is for the Castle Pines Town Center Metropolitan District and the two super block lots, one being 7.9 acres, 623A and 623B being 1.6 acres. Here are some site photos, just so you can see that this is a pretty flat lot without a whole lot of tree cover at all. This view looks, these views all look from Country Club Drive, which is the western border of the property and provides access. Of course, these are the replat approval standards by which you will review the application. There are five conditions of approval. Condition number one, prior to the issuance of any building permits for occupiable structures within lot 623A and 623B, additional subdivision application and approvals are required. Condition number two, during construction activity within the development, the applicant, its successors, and assigned shall take all reasonable care to watch for historic resources, paleontological resources, and other cultural history resources, and shall immediately notify Douglas County in the event of such discovery. Condition number three, during construction activity within the development, the applicant, its successors, and assigned shall conduct a burrowing owl study if any earth moving will take place between March 15 and October 31, excuse me. Condition number four, technical corrections to record copy of the replat exhibit shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. And condition number five, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public meeting and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. And this slide, of course, provides the procedure by which the board reviews the application. This concludes my presentation. The applicant representative, Matt Buster, is here if you have any further questions on the application. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matthew. Any questions for Matthew?
I have none, thank you.
And I have none, Mr. Chair, thank you.
And I have none. And before I hear from the applicant, I would just thought the audience know in the room and online, if you feel you would require more information that was presented from our staff, please feel so to ask those questions during public comment, public testimony. This time, we'll hear from Mr. Buster, the representative for the applicant. And Mr. Buster, if you would state your name, spell your last name, and address for the record, please.
Hello, this is Matt Buster, B-U-S-T-E-R, address 1600 Broadway with David Evans &amp; Associates. In order to keep things moving, I will keep this brief, but not to reiterate anything Matt has said. The reason for this application is the adjacent landowner and developer has requested an option agreement to purchase a portion of what is currently lot 623. And the reason for the replat is subdividing it to accommodate the owner's interested parcel of land. There's no development proposed at this time and will be, if, when development occurs, additional applications will be made. And I'm here to answer any questions as need be.
Thank you, Mr. Buster. Questions from Commissioners for Mr. Buster?
I don't have any question, but I appreciate the information you just shared with us. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. That was very informative. No additional questions.
Very well. No additional questions, except Mr. Buster, there were five conditions of approval as identified in the staff report. Would you, as the representative of the applicant, be in agreement of those five conditions?
Yes, I agree to all five conditions.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. This time, we'll open it up for anyone in the audience, either in the room or online, if they would like to address the board regarding this application 2A for Castle Pines Village filing 14-1. See no one in the room come forward? Ms. Dunning, anyone online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no hands raised.
Very well. This time, we'll close public comment. And Mr. Buster, you can feel free to be seated. And I'll bring you back to the board for any further questions, deliberations, and/or motion.
Would you mind, Commissioner Partridge? Oh, there, I was going to ask for the standards. Thank you.
So before us, we have section 704 in the Douglas County subdivision resolution, and I will state, I believe, all items have been met.
I agree also. Are you ready for a motion?
Yes.
I have a motion to approve Castle Pines Village filing 14A, First Amendment, with five conditions as presented, project file SB 2020-054.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor, state aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Buster. This moves us on to item number 2B, Perry Park filing 12, Third Amendment, project file SB 2020-036. Presenting for staff, I see Jeanette Barr, and I imagine Mike Pasika is online with us.
Commissioners, yes, Jeanette Bear for staff. Mike Pasika is unable to join us today. So I will be presenting.
Very well. Thank you, Jeanette. And while Jeanette's getting ready, I always have to apologize, but I do not consider her a bear, so I pronounce her last name Barr, but it actually is Bear.
That's fine, Commissioner. So yes, Jeanette Bear for Planning Services. The project before you is Perry Park filing 12, Third Amendment, project number SB 2020-036. Terry Morgan Draper is the owner of the property. And Kevin Archer is here as the project representative today. We also have members of our engineering staff online, including Brad Rubenstein, who's our floodplain development administrator, if you have questions later in the hearing.
Pardon me, Jeanette, this is your virtual host. Could you get a little closer to your microphone?
It's hard. You know, I'm going to move the microphone to be where I'm speaking. There we go. The applicant is requesting a replat to adjust the lot line between lots 1B1 and 1B2 of Perry Park filing 12, Second Amendment. The request will also remove a restrictive plat note that limits access of lot 1B2 to Osage Road. The replat plat process begins with the smitl of an application, following review by the public and referral agencies culminates in a meeting before the Board of County Commissioners. Referral comments were all resolved. There were several comments from surrounding neighbors who were concerned regarding floodplain, wetlands, wildlife access, design and size of the proposed structures. The applicant has provided a response to these comments and will review those responses in detail as part of their presentation. The property outlined in red is situated west of the intersection of Perry Park Boulevard and Red Rock Drive. The site is located in the West Plum Creek subarea of the county's 2040 comp plan. Both properties are zoned suburban residential. The property involved in the replat is outlined in red. The Perry Park Country Club is located north of the property across Perry Park Boulevard. Within this red area, you can see various equestrian facilities that have been developed on the larger parcel. And the smaller parcel, which is located here, is currently vacant. So lot 1, which is the larger of the lots, was first established in 1993. In 1997, it was further subdivided into two lots. And then in 2010, further subdivided, and that was the plat that actually created lot 1B2, which is, you know, the subject of most of the discussion today. As I indicated, the larger lot, lot 1B1, is currently developed with an equestrian facility. And I may often refer to these as the smaller and larger lot, just because the lot numbering is so complicated for this one. I don't want people to get confused. So this slide shows the replat exhibit, and also has an expanded view of lot 1B2A, which is the smaller of the lots. The replat request is to adjust the lot line between the larger lot, 1B1, which is about 24 acres in size, and includes that equestrian center I mentioned, and lot 1B2, which is the smaller flag lot. As you can see, the way the lot was established originally, it does have a little flag that runs out to Perry Park Boulevard, even though it directly abuts Osage Drive. The intent of this replat is to provide additional buildable area on the smaller lot that is constrained by steep slopes and wetlands. And most notably, the applicant's desire is to allow room for an accessory structure. Lot 1B2 is proposed to be expanded by approximately half an acre to the east and to the south, sort of over in this area and a little bit on this side as well. The new lot is 1.89 acres in size, and that size is consistent with surrounding lots from the original plat and in the neighborhood. The replat establishes, for the first time, building envelopes on the revised lot 1B2 for both the principal dwelling and for the accessory, proposed accessory structure. And I will try to point those out to you if I can. An envelope for the principal dwelling that would take access off of Osage Drive, and then you can see the secondary envelope, which is intended for the accessory structure. Wetland areas have been identified on the plat. You can see those, those are these areas here. The revised lot and the newly added building envelopes are located outside of the wetland areas, and the actual limits of the 100-year floodplain. While FEMA does show an undefined floodplain, it's called Zone A, running through the lots, an engineered study has been provided that actually locates the limits of the floodplain. And you can kind of see by the blue line that I've shown on this graphic, the limits of the actual floodplain as it exists. And none of the expanded lot or the envelopes are impacted by the floodplain. They're all outside of the floodplain. Excuse me. Go ahead.
Would it be possible, Troy, to move the little window so we can see the picture that Jeanette is describing, please? Thank you, that's much better. I apologize, Jeanette, for interrupting.
No, that's fine. That's the problem with WebEx, it's kind of hard to see. So there again, you can see, you know, the primary building envelope, the accessory building envelope, and then the wetland areas. So like I was mentioning, lot, the smaller lot was originally established as a flag lot. And so it did actually have a piece that extends all the way out to Perry Park Boulevard. A plat note restricted access to the lot, however, to Osage Road. And with this amendment, the accessory structure is allowed to now take access along an existing driveway in that flag to Perry Park Boulevard, thereby avoiding the need to try to cross steep slopes and wetland areas, significant wetland areas. Because of the change to the existing plat note restriction, the replat must be considered by the Board of County Commissioners, and that's why this request came to you. Otherwise, the adjustment to the lot lines could have been processed administratively. Okay. Is there another way to advance slides besides the arrows? It's working just fine. Did you just hit it really hard? All right. Due to the lot's proximity to the map floodplain limits, a note has been added to the exhibit that requires the structures on lot 1B2A to be constructed at a sufficient elevation above the 100-year floodplain, as is required by county regulations. So that's one of the notes, note nine. And then also, I just wanted to bring your attention to a couple notes that were on the original plat, and will carry you forward to this replat as well. The one note requires that, first note requires that the Army Corps of Engineers be consulted prior to the, prior to any building permit issuance, to determine if any further wetlands mitigation is required. And I believe the applicant has begun to make those contacts. The drive, there's a small portion of the drive that might cross the wetland area. And then there was also a note dealing with the Prebles Meadow Jumping Mouse, the Endangered Species Act, I think FEMA, not FEMA. The Department of Interior had looked at this at one point and had determined that there wasn't an issue with endangered species. But this note does require, prior to building permit, that the applicant contact the Department of Interior, just to see if there may be anything that would be required relative to the Endangered Species Act. Here's some photos. This is a view of the site from Osage Road looking northeast. This is a view of the site from Perry Park Boulevard to the southwest. This is a view of the site from Perry Park Boulevard to the southwest. This is a view of the site from Perry Park Boulevard looking to the south-southwest. And finally, a view to the northwest along Perry Park Boulevard. This slide provides the approval standards for a replat, and these approval standards are assessed and discussed in detail in the staff report. Staff has evaluated the replat request in accordance with Article 7 of the subdivision resolution. Should the board find that the approval standards for the replat are met, the following proposed conditions should be considered for inclusion in the board's motion. Prior to recitation of the replat, technical corrections to the plat exhibit shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. And then the second standard condition, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public meeting and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. This slide provides the basis for the board's determination on replat requests. That concludes my presentation. I did just want to note for the record that yesterday, the Board of County Commissioners was forwarded an additional piece of correspondence from Linda and Bill Jackson. Staff received that and did provide that to the Board of County Commissioners via email Kevin Archer is available with a presentation for you, and the property owner is also here.
Jeanette, this is Lance Ingles. Was the additional correspondence already added to the packet?
I don't believe so.
Okay. We will mark that then as Exhibit 1 for today's land use hearing.
I will provide that to the clerk.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jeanette. Questions for Jeanette?
I do have a question. Jeanette, could you go back to the slide that had the drawing of the little lot and where the two envelopes were, the two building envelopes? So is the larger envelope that's on the left side for the primary residence and then the smaller one, the one on the left is for the primary residence and the smaller one on the right is for the accessory building?
That's correct.
So can you use the cursor and show me where the driveway will go? Because the driveway for the accessory building, they are asking for permission to get to Osage, even though originally they could only...
Kind of the other way around.
The other way.
The other way around. So they will kind of go along here. I don't know if you can see my cursor. They will go along here and then pick up an existing drive that extends out to Perry Park. That's actually part of their lot. The large lot has an access easement over that flag, but that actually is part of the lot. So they will come along, kind of that newly established property line, cross a very limited amount of potential wetland area, and then go across. And this is something, that access drive was reviewed by both engineering and Larkspur Fire, you know, to make sure that it all worked.
So the accessory will go out to Perry Park?
That's correct.
And the primary residence will go to?
Osage.
Osage?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Jeanette, with the envelopes, would you reiterate that? Have you heard that the proposed envelopes, both are outside? Is that the 100-year floodplain?
That's correct.
Okay.
There has been, there was a FEMA floodplain, and I think the applicant's representative can talk about this, as well as Brad Robenstein, but my understanding is it's a Zone A floodplain, which means it's kind of an undefined floodplain. They don't, the exact limits are not known. So the applicant, a number of years ago, there was a study that was undertaken that actually defined the limits of where the 100-year floodplain actually is. And the expanded lot in both those building envelopes are outside of that existing floodplain. And that's kind of what that blue line on this slide shows.
And the additional proposed language to the plat? Could you pull that up again?
Well, so the additional language, you know, a couple plat notes will continue. But because that new, you know, that smaller lot is next to a floodplain, as standard practice, we always add notes to the plat that make the applicant verify at the time of building permit that the finished floor elevation is one foot above the floodplain elevation.
Jeanette, would that be, if there's a basement included, would that be the basement floor? Would it be any living floor?
I believe that's correct.
And then I can...
And we can verify with Chuck Smith and Brad Robenstein as well. I don't know. Chuck or Brad, are you on? Can you answer that question?
This is Brad. Yes, I'm with Engineering. Go ahead, Chuck. So it does, the lowest finished floor is accounted in that, yes?
So if the basement isn't finished, would a basement floor be considered the finished floor, even though it's not a finished basement?
It still would be the lowest finished floor, so the basement floor would account for that one-foot elevation.
Very well. Thank you for that clarification.
So it applies to the basement, so it may be. I don't know. It really depends on the elevations, whether they can do a basement or not.
Okay. So again, verify?
It would be verified at time of building permit.
So it is any floor of the house, basically?
Occupiable, yeah, sure. And that would include the basement, logically.
Very well, thank you. Additional questions for staff?
Questions for staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a couple of questions about the input that we received from citizens, including the recent correspondence, but I will reserve those for the applicant's presentation and hope that maybe that might be anticipated as part of the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Leaden. At this time, we'll see applicant representative, Mr. Archer, to address the board, and I know, Mr. Archer, you know the routine.
Yeah, Kevin Archer, A R C H E R, 105 Wilcox, here in Castle Rock. Appreciate the opportunity to address the board today and want to thank Mike and Jeanette for preparing the staff report and helping us through the process. So the purpose of the request, as Jeanette said, the potential lot purchasers, William Kent and Amy Johnson, have spent the last year or so looking at this property as a potential future home. They have some classic cars that they would like to shelter in a garage. And so as part of the purchase, they would like to expand the property lines to allow for the construction of the secondary building. The topography of the site makes it necessary to throw this building down on the lower side of the lot, where the FEMA floodplain had originally impacted the property. As Jeanette said, we've looked at that floodplain, and I can go into a little more detail on So FEMA defines floodplanes through specific zones. In this case, it's a Zone A, which does not have any elevations tied to it. It hasn't been thoroughly studied by FEMA, but there's enough property above it that they feel floodplain is necessary. So in their definition, it's kind of a broad brush floodplain limit that they show on their maps. As we work on properties with those Zone As, we look more at the property in detail. And in this case, Kiowa Engineering performed a study in 1994 as part of one of the early filings of Perry Park, Number 12. And they determined the floodplain that's shown on the mapping, that floodplain was used to previously place this lot. And to satisfy ourselves that that floodplain is reasonably accurate, we went through and we cut a couple of cross-sections through the property and looked back at the Plum Creek FAD study, which identifies about 2,600 CFS flow running down the channel there next to the property. We determined where we thought the floodplain would be, and it lined up very closely to the Kiowa Engineering floodplain, so we're pretty confident that that all is correct. As far as the wetlands go, Mr. Kent has contracted with Wright Water Engineers to determine where wetlands are on the property. They have determined that there are two pieces of what they call aquatic resource areas on the property. The northern piece, they suspect, will be a jurisdictional piece. The southern piece, they suspect, will probably be a non-jurisdictional piece. In any event, that study was kind of a preliminary study. To finish that study off was going to be quite expensive, so they are holding off until we find out if this replat is accepted. If it's accepted, they'll go ahead and finish off the study and run it through the Army Corps and the other required jurisdictions. The project did go out on referral. We got pretty minimal referral comments back from some of the outside agencies. The addressing analyst wanted the lot designations revised to, you know, Lot 1B2, different than what we had originally, so we did that. The assessors' comments were addressed. Douglas County Engineering, that's where we kind of worked through the flood zones. And originally, we took the FEMA floodzone off the map, and Engineering requested that that still be shown on the map, so it's shown on the map along with the Kiowa Engineering floodzone. The only other agency comment was I R E A. There was quite a few overhead power lines that run through the properties, mostly on the larger piece, and they asked that we get some easements recorded for those existing facilities, and that has been accomplished. As Jeanette mentioned, we had quite a few comments from property owners in the area. They mostly seemed to center on the wetlands and the floodplain. The letter you just received from Linda and Bill Jackson, I kind of went through that point by point. There were 13 points that they made. Point number one, the project does not require crossing the floodplain. The entire lot is outside of the floodplain, and so we're not required to cross it in any way or impact it. We will be crossing a small piece of one of the wetlands, and as it goes through the process, the implications of crossing that, whether it be a dedication of some additional property to account for what was disturbed, or if it's determined that the impact will be minor enough that nothing else is required of them, we'll find that all out as we move through the process. The limit is generally a tenth of an acre. We anticipate we'll be well below that. Part of their first comment, they were concerned about two driveways going to the same property and how the fire department would find them. I think generally speaking, when building permits are applied for, addresses are assigned. And I think the way it's going to work in this case, the main building or the main residence will be off of Osage, because that's where the driveway is, and the address for the garage or outbuilding will be off of Perry Park Boulevard, because that's where that access is. The lot, the topography of the lot is going to make it almost impossible to access both properties from one driveway, or both sections of property from one driveway. There's a, like I say, there's some pretty good topography between where the main house will be and where the garage will be. The second comment had to do with the floodzone. I think we've kind of discussed that. So we'll be using the more detailed study prepared in 1994 to determine the floodzone. Their comment on wildlife, again, discussed the buildings being in the floodplain, which they're not going to be. Fourth comment, the accessory structure will be a garage and shop. There won't be any contamination threat to the floodplain or groundwater any more than any other garage structure in the area. The fire department, Larkspur Fire Department is just across the creek, right up against the floodplain, just like this would be. Perry Park Water and Sanitation District's offices are right there across the creek as well. So this won't provide any greater threat than any other building in the area. Their fifth comment, Lot 1B2 is already a buildable lot today. They just have to apply for a building permit and do it. Again, this is just expanding the lot lines a little bit to allow for the accessory structure. At one point, Mr. Draper did look into putting the property into a conservation easement, but the Douglas County Conservation Board declined the property. And again, there are other comments in that section. Wright Water Engineers are going to be working with us to make sure we're in compliance with all the regulations regarding the wetlands. Their item number six, they're correct, the topographic conditions do make the lot a little bit more difficult to deal with. Mr. Kent has been in contact with structural engineers and soils engineers and the like to confirm that the lot is in fact buildable, and it is, knowing that considerations will have to be made for the topography and potential groundwater. Their item seven talks about access off of Red Rock Drive, and we agree, there is no access off of Red Rock Drive. Osage is a dead-end road. This property, again, will be accessed by two different driveways, which will likely have two different addresses. Item eight has to do with fire mitigation, and fire mitigation on the property will be handled at time of building permit, so nothing's required at this point, but during the building permits, fire mitigation will be taken care of. Number nine, they were concerned about Larkspur Fire Protection District. They did review this application and had no comment. As the building permits are processed, I'm sure they'll have additional comments, and we'll make every effort to meet all the requirements. The driveway off of Osage to the main residence is no big deal. The longer driveway into the... The, the longer driveway into the, uh, accessory building may, may be required to have, uh, turnouts, since it's over 400 feet long. And those can be accomplished, they're not turnarounds, but turnouts, so just room to pass. So those will be incorporated in the design at the time. And during discussions with the fire department, it sounds like due to the topography of the site, they might use that road to access some of those rear areas on the property. If there's something going on in the upper part, they can access the back from that, that lower side, so. Item 10, again, Wright Water Engineers being retained to look at the wetland regulations and assure that that stuff is followed through construction on the property. Item 11, we are providing envelopes to assure the buildings will be located outside of the wetlands. Item 12, that the driveway to the garage is a, uh, it's, it's an accessory structure, so it's not going to be a full-time driveway. It's already pretty much graded in, so there's not going to be much grading work that's required for the construction of the driveway. And then 13, again, the driveway, uh, will be constructed to meet all the regulations. Some of the other, other owners, Matthew Witset, um, also had concerns about the floodplain and wetlands, which we've kind of already discussed. And again, the lot is a currently buildable lot, so we're not going to be, uh, adding a new, a new lot per se. And he was concerned that adding this residence will affect the escape route. And, uh, we don't believe adding this residence will affect the escape route in any, any way. Gordon Thoreau, um, he lives just off the side, um, where the access road to the, uh, outbuilding will be. He was concerned that there's a 30-foot drop-off and that it would be, uh, a problem in adverse weather or safety issue. Again, it's that particular part of the road is, is for the out, outbuilding and likely not, uh, won't be used in adverse weather. Also, the grade along that road is generally pretty flat and not, not hilly in, in any, any manner. He was also concerned about drainage. As we move, uh, through the building permit stage, all the drainage is taken care of at that time. If culverts are required on that road to, uh, uh, carry, carry the drainage on over into the pond, those culverts will be designed at that time and, and all erosion control measures will also be, uh, addressed and, uh, designed at the time of building permit. Reed and Mary Roberts, um, are, were also concerned about, uh, the wetlands and floodplain. And again, White Water Engineers have been, uh, brought onboard to take a look at those wetlands and make sure we're following all the proper procedures with that. And the last, uh, property owner, Keith Worley, um, most of his comments were directed towards staff, um, but generally was concerned that there would be variances to allow buildings on the property and, and whatnot. And, uh, and then we don't anticipate any variances being required to build on the property. So with that, we'll kind of quickly run through the approval standards. 70401 complies with all applicable standards, criteria, and original conditions of approval. We, we believe it does, and as we go through this process, we'll kind of confirm that it does comply. 70402 does not create non-conforming lots, and in the case of non-conforming lots, does not increase the non-conformity. All we're doing is adjusting some lot lines. The lots are already existing, so there are no non-conforming lots being proposed. 70403 complies with this resolution. Yes, the project complies. 70404 confirms the goals and policies of the master plan. We're not creating any additional lots. Just adjusting the boundary, so we're not making any changes to the property in that regard. 70405 addresses the design elements established in Article 4, 404 of this resolution. No change to design elements. Building envelopes are proposed to minimize impacts to sensitive areas and floodplain. 70406 conforms to Section 18A Water Supply Overlay District of the zoning resolution. The property is served by Perry Park Water and Sanitation District. 70407 provides per public wastewater collection and treatment system, and if other methods of wastewater collection and treatment are proposed, such systems shall comply with the state and local laws and regulations. Again, it's served by Perry Park Water and Sanitation District. 70408 identifies all areas of the proposed subdivision, which may involve soil or topog- topographical conditions presenting hazardous or requiring special precautions, and that the proposed use of these areas are compatible with such conditions. Again, building envelopes are, are, are provided, and, uh, it is a, it is a tough lot, but still buildable, and maybe a little more expensive, but still buildable. 70409 provides adequate drainage improvements. Again, as each building goes through the building permit process, a D E S C plan, drainage and erosion control plan, um, will be prepared and reviewed at the time of permit application. 70410 provides adequate transportation improvements. It's just a single residence already allowed on the property, and no transportation improvements are required or identified through the process. 70411 protects significant cultural, agricultural, natural, and historical resources and unique landforms. There was no evidence of any cultural, archaeological, historical resources on the property. And again, the wetlands have been identified, and building envelopes are defined to keep us out of the, the wetlands. 70412 has available all necessary services, including fire, police, protection, recreation facilities, utility service streets, open space, uh, to serve the proposed subdivision. Again, already a developed lot, and all those services are already available. That kind of concludes our presentation. Terry Draper is here as long, as well as William Kent, if there's any questions of them. With that, I believe that's our presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. Questions for the applicant, applicant representative?
I have done it this time, thank you.
And I just wanted to thank the applicant for that really thorough explanation. I think all of the potential concerns were anticipated. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, and I have no further questions this time. This time, I will put the, this to public comment testimony. And if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board, whether in the room or online, please feel free to come forward to the lectern. Seeing no one in the room come forward, Ms. Dunne, do we have anyone online who'd like to address the board regarding this application?
Thank you, Commissioner, I have no hands raised.
Okay, very well. So we have no public comment testimony, so we will close public comment or testimony. So this time, I don't believe we need to have the applicant address us anymore, so we will thank applicant for their comments, but I will ask if, if the, the board had any particular questions that they did not get to ask it of the applicant.
I have none.
And I have none, thank you.
Okay, so this time we'll finish up with any applicant presentation, bring it to the board for deliberation. I will ask the board if there's any discussion or deliberation, any concerns?
You know, I'll say that when I read through the packet, there certainly were concerns from the neighbors that had been documented in the file. And Mr. Archer went through and answered each one of them as, um, the concerns were about the, um, wetlands and the, the 30-foot drop-off. And I think that Mr. Archer has answered those questions, that there will be no building in the wetlands. So from my perspective, the concerns were addressed, so thank you.
Commissioner Layden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I would echo those sentiments. I think Mr. Archer really thoroughly answered all of the concerns that I had in the questions that were posed by the citizens. I also believe that the legal approval criteria under 70401 at SAC have been met.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I too agree with my fellow commissioners, and I just want to thank the public for bringing their concerns forward. It's, and it's not that this application or any application does not have requirements to meet, but I think that's what we've seen as the process would, if it would go forward, and has further processes to go through, there are additional requirements that would be met, that would have to be met, whether it be from the county, state, or federal. So with that, I do also agree, the approval standards of Section 704 of our Douglas County subdivision resolutions have been met. So if there's no further deliberation, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a, a motion, but just wanted to confirm that the applicant was comfortable accepting the conditions as presented.
Thank you, and I will ask, thank you, Commissioner Layden for reminding me that. And Mr. Archer, would you mind? Turn my volume down, see if that helps in the echo. Would you mind addressing the board regarding the two conditions of approval that were presented in the staff report? Is the, as the representative for the applicant, are you in agreement with those two conditions?
Yes, sir, they are.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Layden.
You bet, Mr. Chair. So I will make a motion to approve Perry Park filing 12, Third Amendment, with the two conditions as presented, project file SB 2020-036.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, no further discussion. All in favor, state aye.
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 Aye. And the motion passes. Congratulations, and thank you for bringing it forward. This brings us to item two, C, Canyon South filing number 1A, Third Amendment, this project file SB 2020-023, presenting for staff, Eric Pavlenek.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Eric Pavlenek, representing Planning Services. The project before you is Canyon South filing 1A, Third Amendment, project number SB 2020-023. Property is owned by H T Canyon South Development and H T Canyon South Land. Request is for approval to vacate and replat 40 residential lots, 17 tracks and associated streets on approximately 233 acres in Canyon South. The replat will result in 39 residential lots, 10 tracks and associated streets. The intent of the replat is outlined on the slide. The standard replat process is outlined on this slide. The property is owned PD and is located in the central portion of the county, northeast of the town of Casarok, east of Crowfoot Valley Road, and north of Founders Parkway. This aerial shows the site outlined in blue that is subject to the replat. A major PD amendment creating the current Canyon South PD was approved in 2004. The final plat for the first phase of the project, filing 1A, was approved in 2007 for 425 residential lots, 87 tracks on approximately 901 acres. The current owners processed a 304 lot replat within filing 1A in 2019. An administrative replat to adjust the utility easements and vacate a track line is currently in process and does not affect the replat area. This is the exhibit showing the layout of the, of the proposed replatted lots and tracks. The replat results in smaller cluster lots and consolidates several open space tracks, including those previously intended for golf course use. Streets that were formerly platted for private ownership are being converted to public roads. Since the staff report was provided, the applicant has revised the exhibit to depict a six-foot wide trail, which traverses through proposed tracks P, Q, and W. The trail will be owned by the district. If you could see my cursor here. The trail is kind of in this general location here.
Eric, sorry to interrupt you there. And I'm going to ask here too, I think we may be able to expedite this application a little bit, but I will also, at the same time, when the applicant comes forward, I'll ask if they were okay, but I will also ask the public if, when we open public comment testimony, if they would like to have any additional information from staff. We will do so, we expedite a little bit.
Okay. Couple of site photos shown on the screen, the approval standards, uh, the two conditions for this application are noted on this slide. Condition number one, prior to recordation of the plat, technical corrections to the replat exhibit shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. And condition number two, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public meeting and agreed to in writing and including the public record have been relied upon the Board of County Commissioners in proving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to take any questions. Otherwise, Richard Cross is online and can provide an overview if needed.
Thank you, Eric, good job. And I will ask the commissioners, are there any questions for Mr. Pavlik this time?
I have none, thank you.
I'll reserve my questions for the applicant's presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very well, thank you, and I have no further questions this time, so. I will ask if the applicant's representative is ready to address the board? Is it Mr. Hines? Did I catch that right? Richard?
It's with Hines, is, I believe, online.
Okay, Richard Cross with Hines, my apologies. And Ms. Dunne, do you have Mr. Cross on the line?
I am searching, sir. I do not have, oh, there's, Richard Cross is in the meeting? And, Mr. Cross, you are unmuted.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Mr. Cross, if you, please state your name, the spelling of your last name, and your address for the record, please.
Yeah, it's Richard Cross, C R O S S, Representative Hines at 1144 15th Street, Suite 2,600, Denver, Colorado, 80202. We don't necessarily have a presentation. Eric did a great job explaining what we're doing here with the Third Amendment. We're excited about this project. As you guys have seen, we're, we're at the final stages of getting the first 304 lots on the ground for our four national builders. I don't really have much to, the, the purpose for this replat is to get these 39 lots on the ground, um, prior to homeowners moving into the lots that are adjacent to it, just to avoid any kind of disruption to their, to their lives. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Any questions from the commissioners for Mr. Cross regarding the application?
Mr. Cross, this is Commissioner Thomas. This afternoon, when I was talking about the agenda with the county attorney, uh, he mentioned to me that there had been some discussion about trails in this development. Are you able to discuss where these trails are going to be for what you are putting on paper today?
Yes, as Eric had previously spoke to, we provided the approximate location of a six-foot trail that's noted on the actual plat. Now, if you need any more, it's basically defined as which track it'll be, six-foot, and it'll either be like a cross. Aside from that, we are with the original, or the Fifth Amendment PD and the Canyon South filing 1A plat that we are, that incorporates the 304 lots that we're constructing now. We will be constructing the trails that are consistent with both of those documents.
Thank you. I believe that the county attorney, Lance Ingles, is on the line. Mr. Ingles, are you listening?
I am, yes. And the issue with the trails, I believe, has been addressed. There was a reference to trails, but no clarity what that meant. I believe that clarity's been provided, both in the form of a picture on the plat and a plat note, along with the acceptance certificate. So I believe everything's been addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Ingles. I have no other questions. Commissioner Partridge?
Mr. Layden, any questions for the applicant?
Actually, no, Mr. Chair, thank you. I think all my questions have been answered.
Very well, and I have no questions for the applicant. Appreciate it. Thank you much. This time, we'll open up this application for public comment, public testimony. Is there anyone in the room or online who'd like to address the board regarding this application for Canyon South? Seeing no one in the room come forward, Ms. Dunning, do we have any hands raised?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no hands raised.
With that, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board to see if there are any further questions for staff or the applicant. Hearing none from the commissioners. I'll ask for comments and deliberation before we have a motion.
Did the applicant agree to the conditions?
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Well, you guys are on top of me today. And Mr. Cross, are you still on the line?
Mr. Cross, you are unmuted. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm on the line.
There were two conditions of approval as presented in the staff presentation. As the representative for the applicant, are you in agreement with those two conditions of approval?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Commissioner Thomas?
Okay, I'm ready if you're ready.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion to approve Canyon South filing number 1A, Third Amendment, with two conditions as presented, project file SB 2020-023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And I will comment on this. I am sorry for the feedback. Okay. Oh, so, sorry, we are unable to avoid the feedback. But I believe this application makes sense, certainly as at one time, we know years ago, there was a golf course presented with this application. So with that no longer being presented, it certainly makes sense to see a different approach to trails and roads and lots being requested. So I believe all items of the Section 704 of our Douglas County subdivision resolution are met and will be in favor of this application.
And I agree with your comments about meeting the criteria, Commissioner Partridge.
Entertain a motion if there's no further comments.
I already made the motion.
That's right. We have a motion and a second. With that, if there's no further discussion, all in favor state aye.
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 The motion passes. Congratulations. Thank you for bringing this forward.
You know, I'll just say that that feedback confuses me about what we've said and what's going on, so I understand how you're having a little difficulty here, Commissioner Partridge.
Very well. And I was actually just communicating with the county manager too. Sorry, having my challenges is multitasking. I would like to propose, if the board is acceptable to that, because I believe there may be some information to move us along to, to if the applicant for item 3B is listening, I believe there may be a request coming forward. So with that, I would like to move us forward to hear item 3B before we hear item 3A. And I believe the 3B might go fairly quick. If it does, we will take a recess after item 3B before we hear item 3A. Would the board be acceptable to change your agenda?
I'm okay with that, thank you.
And I'm okay with that as well.
Okay. So at this time, I'm going to ask regarding item 3B, Sterling Ranch Plan Development, Amendment to the Water Appeal, project file MI 2020-010. Presenting for staff is Brett Thomas. Brett, are you on the line?
Yes, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. The applicant for item 3B has requested a continuance until the December 15 BCC hearing at 2:30 PM.
And Mr. Thomas, was there a specific reason requested for the continuance?
There was not a request, or a reason in the request. I do believe the applicant's online also.
And Mr. Ingles, if it's appropriate, do you ask the applicant to explain a reason for the request of a continuance?
If that reason matters to the board, you are welcome to ask.
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay. Commissioner Layden, any preference?
No, I'm fine not hearing. I mean, unless the explanation is one that the applicant would like to provide.
Okay. And I always ask that question. I don't believe it's necessary to, this was a complicated application that we have continued once, and I do not need any further explanation. So at this time, we have a request to the board. What would be the preference of the board? If there's a preference of the board to continue this item to December 15 at 2:30 PM, that would be the request?
I'm okay with that. Are you looking for a motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Layden, would you like to do that, or do you want me to?
You go ahead, Commissioner Thomas.
Okay, so this is in regard to 3B, and I will make a motion to continue the amended and restated Sterling Ranch Water Appeal, project file MI 2020-010, until Tuesday, December 15 at 2:30 PM.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, no further discussion. All in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. So again, the amended, excuse me, the Sterling Ranch Water Appeal will be continued and to be heard on December 15, 2020, at 2:15, excuse me, 2:30 PM. At this time, let's recess. It is 3:45. Let's reconvene at 3:55. And at that time, we will begin with item 3A on our agenda.
Commissioner, we are recording.
Thank you, Ms. Dunning. We will reconvene. This is the public hearing agenda for the Tuesday, December 8, 2020, Board of County Commissioners meeting. We are on item 3A. This is CLO Metropolitan District Service Plan, First Amendment, project file SV 2020-002. Presenting for staff, Public Policy Analyst Lauren Pulver and Katie Ryder.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The project before you is Service Plan, First Amendment for CLO Metropolitan District. The project number is SV 2020-002. I'm Lauren Pulver, representing Community and Resource Services. The applicant is CLO Metropolitan District, represented by Megan Murphy.
Lauren, would you slide that maybe just a little closer to you again, if you may? It's so hard to hear that one at times.
The request is for approval of a Service Plan, First Amendment, for CLO Metropolitan District. The amendment request is to increase the district's debt limit and modify language in the service plan. The intent of the, sorry, the application was processed in compliance with all applicable statutes. And the review process is outlined on this slide. The district is located in the Parker Municipal area, which is identified in the 2040 Comprehensive Master Plan. The district outlined in red on this slide is located west of Highway 83 and south of the town of Parker. This is an aerial map of the district. The site was zoned planned development, and the CLO Metropolitan District was approved in 2015. Since the time of the service plan approval, a new owner has acquired the property, and the development assumptions and plans have changed, to the extent that additional debt authorization is requested at this time. There is no proposed changes to the original maximum debt service mill levy of 50 mils, or operation and maintenance mill levy at 10 mils. The proposed First Amendment will increase the debt limit from $11,280,000 to $25 million, with estimated infrastructure costs of $20 million. The addition of language in Section 10G1 to clarify the refunding debt does not count against the debt limit in the service plan, and removing language in Section 11 regarding repayment of developer advances may impact how the district is able to structure its financial obligations. These language changes differ from the county's template and the service plan approved in 2015, which is consistent with the county's template language. The Colorado Revised Statute specifies criteria for approval of special district service plans. The Board of County Commissioners must consider the following nine criteria in evaluating the service plan. The board shall disapprove the service plan unless there is sufficient evidence to meet the four criteria on this slide. Staff has provided a thorough explanation detailed in the staff report. The board may disapprove the service plan at its own discretion unless there is evidence sufficient to meeting the five criteria outlined on this slide. And again, detailed explanations were provided in the staff report. Staff assesses that should the board find the application complies with the 2040 CMP and the criteria in Title 32, the service plan amendment may be approved. This concludes staff's presentation. I am available for any questions that you have. The county's financial consultant, Jim Mann, is also available to answer any questions the board may have. And Jesse Silverstein from Development Research Partners, who performed the market study review, is also available virtually. Unless there are any questions for staff at this time, the applicant representative is prepared to present the details of the request.
Thank you, Lauren. Questions for Nick, commissioners for staff at this time?
I have none, thank you.
I'll reserve my questions for the applicant's presentation.
Thank you, and I do also, we're reserving further questions this time. Ask if the applicant's representative is on the line. Ms. Dunning, do you see? Oh, I'm sorry, the applicant's representative is in the room, sorry.
No problem.
I need to look around the room more, sorry.
I'm Megan Murphy, last name M U R P H Y, from White Bear, Ankle, Tanaka and Waldron, 2154, East Commons Avenue, Suite 2000, Centennial 80122. There are also many other applicant reps on the line. We have someone from DA Davidson, someone from Atwell, someone from Toll Brothers, and someone from North Slope Capital Advisors.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Okay, to go? Okay, next slide. Here's a vicinity map, which staff already showed you where the project is. Should I face this way? I'm not sure where the camera is. I'll look at you and do this. Next slide. So as Ms. Pulver said, this is an existing metropolitan district. We're here for a First Amendment to the service plan. That's what we're asking you to approve this afternoon. Next slide. The statutory requirements for a First Amendment, as well as your requirements for any amendments, have been met. Next slide. Here's just a comparison of where the project was in 2015, where the project is in 2020, and why we're asking for these changes. So the debt limit increase aligns directly with the projected cost increase, which Atwell did both the initial cost estimate in 2015, revised costs in 2020, and tells us it's going to cost more to make this project work. The estimated assessed value at buildout also changed from when Forestar was developing the project to now Toll Brothers developing the project with a different residential housing price point. Total anticipated developer advances to make this project work, about $36 million. Of that, 15 is private side. It's not going to be repaid by the district. That just shows you the original service plan to today and the difference. Next slide. Here's things that aren't changing. Mill levies paid by residents, term of the debt, operations, and debt mill levy. None of that's changing. Next slide. Atwell, Jeff French is on the line if you have questions about the cost increase. My understanding as not an engineer, is they went out and got bids, and these are the costs for what it will take. Next slide. We've got Brooke Hutchins from DA Davidson and Steph Chichester from North Slope on the line to talk about increased debt limit. And there's some questions about coverage ratios I don't want to get into, since that's not my area of expertise. But suffice it to say, it costs more, so we need more authority to issue debt. We also have more AV to support that debt. And that's the end of the show. I think there's one more slide that says, please approve. Happy to answer questions.
Questions this time for the applicant's representative?
Yes, Ms. Murphy, at the end, you said we have more AV. Is that appraised value?
Oh, sorry, assessed value.
Assessed value.
I apologize for using the short term.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions.
Thank you for bringing it up, Commissioner Thomas. I'll just chime in here. And so can you give the explanation of the increase assessed value you're just expecting?
Yes, in the original service plan in 2015, it was anticipated that the homes would be around $400,000. Estimate, these are all estimates. And the new anticipated dollar amounts are around $600,000. So same number of lots, 363 platted lots, but as the homes cost more, your assessed value, project-wide, goes up. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Commissioner Layden, any questions for the applicant's representative?
Yeah, you know, I think some of the initial concerns that I had when I first heard about this application have certainly been addressed in reviewing the packet. I think it certainly helps to hear about the no substantial modifications to the mill levy. But can you maybe go into greater detail as to how, if any way, this would impact the residents financially?
So financially, at this time, there's no residents, so no one's going to be changed because no one lives there now. If you were a resident, under the old service plan, the most mils you would pay is 60 mils. If you're a resident today, the most mils you'll pay is 60 mils. So there's no change. There's no change to the 30-year mill levy term either.
Okay, that's helpful to hear. Thank you.
Ms. Murphy, if we may, go back to the slide, few slides back for your presentation that showed the previous?
Yes, I think hopefully someone can help me. They're helping me. Hang tight. They're going to help me.
So my question will revolve around the applicant's contribution. It was roughly two million sum, now up to 15 million sum, I believe.
Yes.
So wait till we get to that, as I want to...
I think it's slide five.
There we go.
Okay. So I can't speak to how this was calculated in 2015. My office wasn't involved in 2015. This year, we got a response from Ellers, who represents or helps you guys financially assess the project, that there wasn't clear understanding for how much the project would cost, how much would be public improvements, how much would be private. So we added language that we believe clarifies total project costs is, I'll call it 36.2 million. Of that, public improvements, 20.8 million, leaves you this delta of 15.4 million. Does that make sense? So you got 36.2 is what's going to take to bring the whole project, private-public, to life.
There we go, yes.
20.8 of that is public improvements eligible for funding with the district. 36 minus 20 gets you to 15. Those are the exact numbers, but that's just colloquial math from the lectern. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it is. And I know, have you seen Mr. Mann with Ellers, our consultant, is in the audience? And we'll, we're going to call him at some point, but give you the option to at least address some of his concerns in our staff report.
Yeah, I think, I mean, there were a lot of, can you show your slide with the two specific language things, Lauren? That'd be so helpful. Thank you. You saw a lot of correspondence between us and Ellers, very long letters that I won't go into too much detail about, but I do want a chance to address these two language concerns that staff raised, particularly because it was in red font. So you always know that'll be a key issue. Okay, right there. So the industry standard interpretation is that refunding doesn't count against the debt limit. So if you issue $10 million in debt, and you refund at a better interest rate another 10 million, you haven't issued 20 million in debt. So we want to add language that clarifies that, because you don't have that in your current template. So we want to just make that clear, even though that's how everyone has been operating. We want to clarify that. And then the second change about advances that don't count against the debt limit, again, the industry standard is only multiple fiscal year obligations, such as a bond or a loan, would count against the debt limit, not annual appropriated, like your landscape contractor, would count against your debt limit. So again, we want to remove this to provide clarity, and we think already matches what industry standard is. But as to specific Ellers back and forth, I've got North Slope and DA Davidson to handle that for me on the line.
All right. And I would ask that if they want to address anything at this time, because I believe it might be easier to address it now versus later, but it may be both we have to look at addressing. So I'll ask you, is there, with your other consultants on the line, would they like to address any of the comments that Mr. Ellers had brought forward?
I believe they're prepared to answer questions, but no one else has a presentation like I did.
Okay, very well.
I'm going to step back.
Additional questions from Commissioners?
I'm just wondering if it makes sense for, I don't know if it's Mr. Ellers, or you're with the Ellers Corporation, Ellers Corporation, but for this gentleman to present his concerns first, and then let the applicant respond to his concerns.
I'm fine with that. I was just trying, because the letters are in the packet, it's in hard form. So, but since the applicant does not have anything further, I think it would be wise to have Mr. Mann come forward with the, as our consultant. But I will first ask, is there anything further as the applicant's representative to present?
No.
Okay, very well. Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to ask if our county's consultant with Ellers, Mr. James Mann, will address the board, and then Mr. Mann, would you like to offer any comments? I know we'll probably have some questions.
First, I'm just really happy to take my mask off.
Yes.
And I'm actually very happy to be at a meeting in person, as opposed to on the, in cyberspace. It's been a, it's been a long drought. So thank you for the opportunity.
And I, I'm sorry, didn't ask if you...
Yeah, my name is James Mann with Ellers, Public Finance Advisor, 4700 South Syracuse, Suite 860, Denver, Colorado, 80237. We did the review of the proposed amendment to the service plan. And when we do a review of an amendment, really, the underlying approval of the service plan really doesn't change. So when you look at the nine criteria that you go through, the first four criteria really are still fundamentally the same. You know, so there isn't an issue. Where we started to draw some questions was when you get into the second five criteria, and primarily the last of the criteria, which is whether this is in the best interest of the future residents that are going to be in the area. And when we approached the evaluation, there was a number of concerns or questions that came up in terms of how the cost from 2015 went from roughly $10 million to $20 million, basically five years later. And we haven't seen an increase in, in costs that would cause a doubling of the price. Now, we did ask the question of the applicant or the proponent, and they provided us some information in terms of being able to actually go out and get actual bids. So that clarified some of those cost increase. One of the big areas of cost increase that we identified, though, was in this requested revision, 60% of the increase going from roughly $10 million to $20 million was for internal subdivision improvements that were not included in the original approval. So the original approval did not include the intract or within subdivision improvements, whereas this request does include those improvements. So you're looking at adding some of those costs that were not originally considered in the original approval of the Metropolitan Service District Plan. That was probably one of the biggest areas that we questioned. And we questioned it from a number of circumstances. Number one, the original plan had the same number of units, roughly $400,000 of value. Now we're looking at the same number of units, 343 single-family units, but now the average price is a little over $700,000. There's a big delta between those two, and that big delta provides for, at the maximum mill levy authorized under statute, it provides for a lot more financing capability. And a lot of times, we see finance plans like this, they're crafted to solve for X. And X being, given this revenue stream based upon these assumptions, in this case, higher-value homes, what's the maximum we can pull back out of the Metropolitan Service District? And so that's why we start to question, and that's why we kind of raise the question of what, you know, what is the total cost? Because in the original proposal, again, the developer had identified about 2.8 million dollars of unreimbursed costs. Now, in the information that they're providing, they're suggesting that's $15 million of unreimbursed costs. So there's, you know, again, a big gap. I don't know that we're looking at the same apples-to-apples comparison in terms of how that original gap was calculated versus how it's calculated today. We raised some questions as to how that is actually being funded. As you've read my reports in the past, we also raised the question of that a subdivision like this, or a development like this, there's a bunch of different components that go into the financing mechanism. The Metropolitan District Financing Tool is one piece of it. The other piece of it is that you're, as a developer or a proponent, you are selling house-and-lot packages. And we never know about that other side of the equation, the house-and-lot packages, what the revenue stream that that's generating is actually providing to the bottom line of the overall development. We only get to see the picture of the Metropolitan District Financing Tool side. So there's a second part of the equation we're not privy to. We're also not privy to what the developer or the proponent paid for the land to begin with. That all gets factored into the dollars and cents of any type of development. I mean, the bottom line is, in this case, the developer-proponent, they're here to make money. Everyone is looking to make money. They need to make a reasonable rate of return on their investment in order for a development to move forward. I am not going to stand in front of you and say that they shouldn't make a reasonable return on their investment. But we don't know what that return on investment is at this point. We have some of the numbers, but we don't have all the numbers. So again, in our reports, we always talk about being able to evaluate a full sources and uses on the development to look at not only what the public improvement costs are, what the internal costs are, but then also on the other side of the equation, you know, what did you earn on the selling of those house-and-lot packages? Plus, then you're adding the other revenue source of the Metropolitan District Financing Tool, offsetting some of those costs. So there's a lot of information that we don't know. And so we raise the question as to whether it's in the best interest of the district, or the future residents. In terms of the, the language changes, I would, I would agree with the developer-proponent that typically refunding obligations, the principal amount does not count twice. And so that's a, I, we think that that's a good language change that it doesn't necessarily... necessarily count twice, so you don't have to overstate the amount of, of maximum bonds that you can issue. Because if you're doing a refunding, typically you're doing that refunding for savings, and that's a, that's a good thing to do for the future taxpayers of the district. So that language that was shown in red, we would, we would concur, excuse me, we would concur with and say that that's a good thing. As to the developer advances on an annual basis, if there are annual expenses that are being advanced, we kind of understand that that's not necessarily a multi-fiscal year obligation, but many times it turns into one. Typically, the way we approach it is if those developer advances are not going to be repaid within one year, that it becomes a multi-year fiscal obligation because it's going to continue to accrue interest if, unless, you know, on an annual basis. So back to the meat of the issue, we, we have a hard time on the ninth criteria, saying that this is in the best interest of the residents, the future residents of the district, because we don't have all the information available. The second five criteria of which the ninth one falls in, that is completely up to the discretion of the county and the members to determine whether they want to employ those reasons to deny the approval of the district. It is not a mandatory, the first four are mandatory, and we do not question the first four mandatory. We believe that there is still, the district proposal still meets those four mandatory criteria. It's the subjective ones that we, we raise the question on.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Questions for Mr. Mann? You did a very good job explaining some of the questions. I had no doubt, and a lot of the information you provided was very good, but just your additional explanation, I appreciate.
So I have printed out these pages from the packet with your comments, and on page 171, I'll just read the paragraph with the conclusion. It says, "Ellers concluded that the First Amendment substantially complies with Colorado revised statutes 321202 per N2, but questions compliance with Colorado revised statutes 321202 per N2.5 per NE, related to whether the district will be in the best interest of the area to be served." So my question to you is, does this, is this based on the paragraph above, which says, as follow-up, "Ellers requested a full accounting of sources and uses to determine general return on investment for the developer. The applicant did not offer a response to these comments." So let me just add that we've had this discussion before, and I don't know that it's the responsibility of this board to know and to determine if the general return, the ROR, is our business. But when I hear this, in your second question, your second paragraph about questions compliance, that's where I think I need to ask the question, to have you explain this to me. Does that make sense?
I think so. And, and again, we raised the question about return on investment, return, you know, their rate of return on a project. That is within the purview of the individual approving authority to employ that if they so choose. It is not mandatory that you need to look at that. From my development experience on, and I only work on this side of the table, I do not work on the side of the table for developers, so I never am conflicted about the advice that I give. And, and the advice that, you know, we as a firm tend to give is that you should know that return on investment, because we are talking about tax, future taxpayer dollars. And so this is the last, you know, bastion of protection that you have to provide those future taxpayers. And if by approving the amendment to the district or the service plan, it turns out that, and this is just a wild number, the proponent is making a 65% return on their investment, and it's being funded, or a good portion of that is being funded through taxpayer dollars, future taxpayer dollars, that doesn't look very good. And if it's 15%, I'm not going to stand and argue with a reasonable return on investment. But if it's that higher number, it starts to get to the point where you really probably did not need the financing mechanism to the level that it was approved at to cause the development to move forward. There's a big balancing act here, and I don't have the exact answer of what that balancing act is. I'm not here to stand and say, shouldn't do the development at any cost, but there's a reasonable return that should be expected, and we, and from my perspective, we should know what that reasonable return is in a range to be able to go, to move forward, because then, some future point in time, when some angry citizen group is standing in front of you saying, "My taxes are too high, I'm in this metropolitan district, and I'm paying all these dollars," some future commissioner is able to say, "We went through a process, and we evaluated the return on investment, and it was within the norms of investments and returns on investment." It diffuses the argument. Whereas I think there are a lot of cases now where you can get in an argument where you don't know those answers, and so it's just, it's kind of a, well, we, we made the decision, but we didn't have any real financial backing to say it was in the best interest of the future residents. That's the point that we're trying to get to. And it's typically a goal between, between a private consultant, similar to Ellers, and the developer to work out what that range is. Typically, that information does not get put into the public because the proponent, the developer, doesn't necessarily want that information in the public. And so we very carefully work through either the county's attorney, or a special attorney, special district attorney, special counsel, to make sure that that information doesn't get out in the public, because we recognize that that would be very damaging to whichever proponent it would be, if all of a sudden somebody can see their development pro forma and what they're willing to do the work for compared to what another developer might be able to do. So it's a, it's a, it's a science, but there's a lot of nuance to it in terms of looking at what that return on investment is.
So thank you for that explanation. I certainly feel the responsibility to these future ratepayers. I think this is who you're talking about when you say taxpayers.
Yes.
Are the people who are going to buy these $700,000 homes that told brothers' building, and I do support metro districts, because I think it's cheaper and more fair to home buyers to not have to finance the infrastructure for 30 years when they get their mortgage, and to pay it via a metro district where it's added to their property tax every year. But we certainly want to make sure that whatever that amount is that those future Douglas County residents are paying in their metro district mill levy for their property tax is reasonable. And the one slide we looked at shows that this is the same number of mills, 60 mills, 10 for maintenance, O and M, and the other 50 mills are to pay off the debt. So I'm looking at 11 million versus 25 million, yet it's the same payment structure. But I guess the explanation that Ms. Murphy gave is because the homes are going to be more expensive, they're not going to be $400,000 products, they're $700,000 products.
Yes.
And that, that's where this difference will be paid off in. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And if I might add, regardless of whether homebuyer X is paying for it through their mortgage, or through the Metropolitan District Financing Tool, they're still doing it over a 30-year period.
But they're not paying interest on 30, on it for 30 years.
But as, as, yes, they are, because through the financing mechanism of the Metropolitan District, they are issuing debt at an interest rate, so you're still paying interest on that.
Right.
Infrastructure improvement, or that, that cost. Most of the time, until a district is mature, in terms of being built out, and, and the homeowner probably can get a mortgage for a lower interest rate than the Metropolitan District can borrow the money for on a tax-exempt basis, most of the time. Once a district is, is built out, that may shift back the other direction, that the interest cost on a tax-exempt municipal bond, which these would be, may actually be less than what you can get on a mortgage rate. And so there is a, there's a, again, there's a balancing act, but you're also balancing that if all the costs fall on the, the homebuyer, and not through the Metropolitan District mechanism, it may hurt the ability to market a housing type. And so there, again, there's this, it's a very fine balancing act over what the, the proper mix is, in terms of what, how much is going to fall to the taxpayer versus how much is going to fall to the individual homeowner, but at the end of the day, it's about the same.
Thank you.
Let me just address Ms. Murphy. I know you wanted to say something, but if our typical process would be, the applicant's presented, and certainly you may have additional information or rebuttal to Mr. Mann or public comment, but ask if you could keep notes, and then we'll address you after Mr. Mann and public comment. Thank you. Additional questions for Mr. Mann? Commissioner Layton?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have some additional questions and comments, frankly. No doubt, you raise a really critical point, which is, the infrastructure in our communities usually is not possible without the incredible efforts of the metro districts and the work that goes into them from those taking the enterprise risk. Certainly, I always tell my own daughter, one of the nice things about the United States of America is there's no limit to how much money you can make. And I think that we all support those free-market principles and don't want to limit the potential revenue and the, the potential for those in the private sector to be successful. We want to promote success as much as possible. That said, I think Mr. Mann lays out a very important distinction, which is reasonableness and being thoughtful about future taxpayers. No doubt, the applicant clarified that there are not currently any residents, but certainly we're thinking many years ahead, where the decisions that we make today will certainly impact future inhabitants of this particular community. Douglas County is well-known for being incredibly low on taxes, and I think a lot of individuals moved to this particular county for that reason. I think it is a stark contrast to give the power of taxation to metro districts that then pass on those high costs to residents. And no doubt, we've, we've received a lot of communications and have heard a lot in the media and really throughout the state about concerns with regard to how much citizens are paying within metro districts. But it is a balancing act, and no doubt, the infrastructure wouldn't occur without them. So forgive the long-winded exposition, but you know, when I'm looking at the packet, the question that I have, so Mr. Mann, you say, "Without a full accounting of sources and uses for the project, it's impossible to determine the financial gap that needs to be backfilled by future property taxes to cause the developer to occur, which would allow the proponent to make a reasonable return." And I'm wondering what kind of work it would take on your part in order to, to get that full accounting done and to get those questions answered?
Typically, it's, it's a process that, as we go through the finances, it would take a couple of weeks to do the work, and a lot of it is dependent upon the, the information that we receive from the proponent. If the information is comprehensive, we can turn it around relatively quickly in terms of an evaluation, or there are other firms that do that as well. They can turn around this information relatively quickly. Again, you know, a lot of times when you go through this process, it is not black and white. There's a lot of gray in between, and so it becomes a collaborative effort between the, whoever is doing the financial review and the proponent, to basically get to a point where everybody's in agreement, and at that point, it's handed to the commissioners with, you know, basically that we've agreed on these numbers, and this is where, this is the range that we fall in, and everyone's going to be in a position to be able to say that's reasonable or not. And so that's, it's, it really is a bit of a back-and-forth process to go through the evaluation of the sources and uses.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Mann. I just want to say, it gives me considerable pause when our expert tells us that the concern's based upon CRS 3212032.5E about the creation of the district, whether that's in the best interest of the area to be served. That gives me significant pause, as does the statement that you believe the proposed development plan and amended service plan is crafted simply to exact the maximum dollars out of the district regardless of need. That's significant, and I realize that there are some, there's some subjectivity to this, but again, we need to link it to our approval criteria and our objective standards, and I'm not, I'm not hearing that strongly supported by you.
I, I, my concerns are noted.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mann, certainly you brought forward, I think, everything that we've seen in the packet and added to it. Is there anything additional that you would like to offer?
The only thing I'd, I'd like to offer is, it sounds like I'm anti-metropolitan district. I'm not. I come from a state that didn't have metropolitan districts, and I think metropolitan districts are a superior way to finance growth and development. I think if used in the right manner, they, they are an excellent tool to be employed to help cause development to actually occur. So don't take my comments that I, that I make, that I'm somehow anti-development or I'm anti-metropolitan district. I think it's a, it's a very well-written means or part of the statutes to help development actually occur. I just have some concerns on parts of it that it's maybe too rich for the proponent at times.
Mr. McGinn, that's why we employ you as a consultant, because I don't believe, I know I don't, I don't believe this board believes that you are anti-metropolitan district. This isn't the first we've come up with. You do a great job in raising the questions and providing us information as our consultant, and we really appreciate that. So thank you for those comments.
May I ask another question?
Oh, yes, Mr. Mann.
Sorry. Lauren, could you put the slide up that has the paragraph that Ms. Murphy talked about, that had the additional information in red that talked about refunding the issuance? Yeah, that one. So Mr. Mann, tell me what you think about this statement. I think you already said it, but say it again.
I would agree with the statement that when you're looking at a debt limit, in this case, it's 25 million, that if you were to issue $20 million worth of debt, and then interest rates were to be of such a manner that you wanted to refund that $20 million of debt to save interest costs, that you shouldn't necessarily need to modify the plan again to raise the debt limit, that the refunding debt should not count against that debt limit, the principal amount, that it's, that's a double counting of the debt limit. And that, you know, if, if, it opens the door, if you have to overstate the amount of debt that you're going to issue, that you might issue more debt than you really should have, not necessarily on a refunding basis. You want to tie that debt, that maximum debt amount, to the projects that you're actually constructing, and then that, the, the language in red then allows you to do the refunding of that debt without impunity, as long as you've got some savings along the way.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. This time, we'll open it up for public comment, public testimony on this application. If there's anyone, there is no one in the room that I'm aware of, Ms. Dunning, is there anyone online raising a hand to offer comment on this application?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no hands raised.
Very well. So we'll close public comment. Now I'm going to ask Ms. Murphy if you'd like to address the concerns that were raised by the board, Mr. Mann? the board, Mr. Mann?
Hi again. Sorry, I jumped the gun there. I think Mr. Mann presents a very narrow view of the words "best interest." I think one part of best interest might be this goose hunt about reasonable rate of return for private land development, but it could also be funding more public improvements. That is in the best interests of these taxpayers. If the First Amendment isn't approved, the district already exists, can already impose 50 mils, can already impose 10 mils, but could pay for less improvements because the debt limit is low. Why is the debt limit low? Because it's based on costs from old development assumptions. So we just want to bring the development assumptions and the debt limit up and keep doing what we could already do, which is the 60 mils. I think those things are in the best interests of the future taxpayers of CLO and Douglas County. And Mr. Mann's argument is one narrow view, in my opinion, of best interest. That's all I have to say, but happy to answer any questions.
I did realize I had some other papers here that I had printed off and highlighted. I have a question about an executive summary. It says this fourth paragraph of the executive summary section of the service plan is amended and restated in its entirety, and it talks about the debt service mil levy will be 50 mil, subject to the Gallagher adjustment. So do you or any of your team, are you able to, do you understand what, where I'm talking about? And talk to me about Gallagher, because B passed last month, so does Gallagher still apply?
So that's a very good question, and we added the Gallagher adjustment language because your template didn't have it, so we came in asking staff, what could the mil levy be? Is it Gallagher from 2015? Is it 20, what is the year? And we, I think, came to the conclusion with staff that it was the year of approval, 2015, but they're here to tell me if that's wrong, and added that before Amendment B was even on the ballot. We submitted this in February of 2020. So I guess the question to staff, and I think my position is we'd like to keep it in there so that the mil levy is actually the number that's reflected in the financing plan, which is, I'm not sure exactly what page of the packet, but shows the 55.664 mils, because that's the authority we had when the service plan was approved in 2015, and we don't want to change it. And that's what our financing plan is based on. Does that answer your question?
Well, Gallagher with B passing last month, will that, how will that impact your service plan?
So, right now, the residential assessment ratio will remain at 7.15%. If the legislature chooses to reduce it, which they can do even after Amendment B, we would need to increase our mil levy to remain revenue neutral. Does that answer the question?
It does. Thank you.
And would that require a vote from the district to the public?
No.
Or that would be an automatic? Okay.
Automatic adjustment, just as we have in the original service plan right now.
Okay. Commissioner, I do have a question about an election that occurred on May 5, 2020.
Yes.
Can you explain that election, who all was involved, and what the results were?
Yes. So every special district across the state's required to conduct a regular election in May of even years, happened to be May 5 of 2020 this year. So we were not only directing electors, or electing directors, excuse me, we also held a Tabor election to match the service plan amendment. So the previous electoral categories were based on the 11 million debt limit, and now we've increased them to match this amendment, so we have electoral authorization that matches this First Amendment.
Okay. Thank you. So the concern was the internal infrastructure costs were not included on the regional plan, and now they are included. And with Mr. Mann's analysis, it's about 60% of the increase of the cost. So that raises concern, and certainly is, is it standard procedure to include those internal infrastructure costs or not?
I'm going to have to turn that over to Jeff French from Atwell. He's on the line. Hopefully, he can become visible or something. I don't know. This is my first in-person virtual combo meeting.
And Ms. Dunning, we're looking for Mr. French.
Mr. French, you have been unmuted. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, my name's Jeff French. I'm with Atwell LLC. I'm the civil engineer on the project. And let's see, I have to state my address, too, right? 143 Union Boulevard, Lakewood, Colorado. So to specifically address the question, I'm going to say that it is now, you know, districts I'm setting up currently, I almost invariably include the interact improvements as part of the district. Years ago, we would identify what I always called spine infrastructure, and we only included the spine infrastructure in the district setup, but now it's much, much more normal to include the interact as part of the district improvements, because they're public and they're for the benefit of the, of the development and all of that. So I guess that's the short answer to your question.
Very well. Additional questions from commissioners?
I don't have any further questions.
Neither do I.
Okay. That concludes the applicant's questioning. So at this time, we'll go into commissioner deliberation.
So Commissioner Layden, you and I don't agree all the time, but on this particular issue, I thought you were pretty articulate about your concern about the issues that Mr. Mann had raised. And when I read the packet over the weekend, I had similar concerns. Do you still feel the same way that you, from what you articulated earlier?
Well, I would echo those sentiments. I think you raised a lot of the same questions that I had, and I continue to have those. So I would, I would tend to agree that there certainly remains some inquiries to be had on this, and I don't know if it means a down vote on the application today or a request for continuance for more study, but certainly would be open to your direction and the chair's direction in terms of where you two would like to go.
You know, I understand that, and I just got to say, I'm having challenge with the approval criteria, number nine, but I'm wondering what additional information would we request that would give us an understanding? And I can't say I know what that is, let's be honest.
Well, Commissioner Partridge, I think you bring up a good question. And when Mr. Mann was explaining, well, first of all, let me just say that Ms. Murphy is correct when she says they could continue charging the 60 mils, but that way, they're not going to have the additional funds available to do the infrastructure that they need for the project they choose to build now. So if we want to facilitate them getting the funds they need to build the project they want, so that 10 or 15 or 20 years, this room isn't filled with ratepayers that are furious with this board because we made a bad decision, how do we ensure that we are making the right decision? And one thing that Mr. Mann said that piqued my attention, that, so we support capitalism. We want people to take the risk, to create something, and get a profit from that. And I think what I heard is that if the profit is too big, and it is being done on the backs of the ratepayers, that's what we need to be protective of. And there was that study that the Denver Post did on metro districts last year or this year, I've lost track of time. We want to be sure that we are being responsible to these future ratepayers. So is there a way to protect the information that Mr. Mann is requesting from Ms. Murphy and the developer, so it would not become public information that their competitors would have access to, but would provide our expert with the ability to give us a recommendation that we could depend on? So maybe I'm directing this question to the county attorney, Lance Ingalls. Is there a way for Ellers Corporation or some other corporation to get the information necessary to answer our questions without violating the ability for the developer to be profitable and protect his information from competitors?
I think, and this is Lance Ingalls, I think the answer is yes, if the applicant and Mr. Ellers are willing to cooperate in a way that makes that happen. So what could happen is if the applicant were willing to provide additional information directly to Mr. Ellers, it would not be submitted to the county, it would not thereby become a public record, and if Mr. Ellers felt the information was, or if Ellers felt the information was significant enough that he could make a recommendation more generically, so that you could then bring it back here and reconsider it upon a continuance, I think that is a possible way to keep private and proprietary information out of the public record. What can't happen is that information would be submitted directly to the county because it would thereby become part of the public record. So essentially, you would be treating Ellers as an expert witness, and you would not be demanding to see all of the information on which he relied. So if the applicant and Mr. Ellers were willing to do it that way, I think that is a potential solution to your question.
Commissioner Layden, what do you think of that solution?
Well, I think that's a brilliant option, provided the applicant and Mr. Mann are amenable to that. I certainly don't need to get into the weeds or see proprietary information, but I do believe this board needs to have a thorough and complete recommendation from our consultant that we can rely upon, again, so that future residents, future taxpayers aren't coming to future boards and wondering what happened here today.
Commissioner Partridge?
You know, it's not the first time we've been in this dilemma, and realizing, too, that, again, we, I agree, Mr. Mann put it very well, is not against anybody making a profit, and not that I need to know what that profit is, but this is what we come down to all the time, is how do we know the investors are going to be happy with the amount of profit that would or would not come? And that's something I don't think would be a public information for us. But my concern is a substantial increase of the debt limit. I just have reservations about it. So right now, I'll just tell you, I could not be in agreement with that number nine is met. And I know we're only in deliberation, so it's not for the applicant or Mr. Mann to come back up to the lectern to address the board, but I think the concerns are being heard. And what I may suggest, if that's fine, that we, I think we've aired our concerns, but I hear the board would be willing to a continuance. And within that timeframe, that would give the applicant time to address the concerns we have, or not to concern, address those concerns. That would be their choice. And then, as we would use our consultant, we believe the subject matter expert we've used before, very comfortable with our consultant, I think that would be feasible to bring back to the board. Again, it would be the applicant's choice to whether they would provide the further information to Mr. Ellers, to Mr. Mann, or Ellers to provide to us. So I would be amenable to that for a continuance.
Commissioner Partridge, this is Troy, your host. I do have a call-in person. They are the financial advisor to the district. He was wondering if you would be interested in hearing what he has to say on this.
I'm going to say, since we are in board deliberation, that if we would provide additional information, we would also have to open it back up to the public. But I think the concerns with the board have been presented, and I think we're at the point that, being in deliberation, we would no longer take any further testimony or comments.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Dunning. Appreciate that, though. And I see our county attorney, Megan Taggart, would like to address the board?
Yes, and I did just want to make a note to the commissioners, that should a continuance be considered, the applicant would need to agree to it.
Okay. Very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
See, we rely on the subject matter experts all the time. But I will ask the board if that is a question to pose to the applicant. Would you be amenable to that?
If I could ask another question first. So you, Commissioner Partridge, are going to be around until January 12. So do we need to continue this sometime while you are still here, since you have been part of this deliberation? And is that enough time for Ellers to do their work, or would this just be continued and then heard by a different board? Maybe that's a question for Mr. Ingalls.
Commissioner, I wish you'd bring up a very good point, because it is, this is not an easy, service plans are never easy for us to understand, metropolitan district service plan, so I certainly have that concern also. So I think that'd be very hard, not knowing my replacement, if that individual is versed. I would certainly think that we would need to hear it prior to my exit.
Commissioners, let me jump in. If need be, it is possible that even a new commissioner could get up to speed on the record and put himself in a position to hear that application at some point down the road. But I think a more relevant question, at least immediately, is will the applicant agree to a continuance, and if so, for how long? If they're not willing to exchange additional information, or if that's not attractive to them, then I think you're back to making a decision based on the record presented today. But if they believe that they can come up with something that'll be satisfactory to our financial consultant, and they think they can do that within a reasonable time, the rest may take care of itself as far as the scheduling.
Very well. So we know we have a scheduled hearing, December 15. Is it possible that there could be a hearing December 22 or December 29? And I ask that because, or even January 5? And I ask that because the first hearing for the new commissioner is January 12. That is the swearing day, but I would recommend it not, if there is a continuance of this item, I would recommend that it not be January 12, and so it'd be afterwards. So I'm just throwing out possible dates. So let me ask that question first. And Ms. Taggart, maybe you would be able to answer that. I know we do not have any hearings scheduled for the Tuesday, December 22, or December 29, or January 5. But I would ask the board, ask legal for their opinion.
Well, and I'll weigh in on part of that. The board has the authority to schedule a public hearing or a special public hearing at any point that it deems it appropriate to do so. So I think we're still back to the question, what is the applicant's position on a continuance? But yes, if the three of you or a quorum of the three of you are willing to schedule this hearing between now and when we have a new commissioner on this board, then staff can make that happen. You have that authority.
Very well. One of the applicants can hear those options that we could consider. So at this time, are the commissioners okay if I bring the applicant forward to explain and ask for understanding of a possible continuance?
I am okay with that.
I am okay with that.
And Commissioner Layden?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, I am.
Ms. Murphy, would you, so Ms. Murphy, what we are presenting you with, I think, do you have any questions of our concerns? And if it's possible for you to consider a continuation based on our concerns also, but that would be up to you.
Yes, understood. Thank you, commissioners. I would like to understand what will be the reasonable determination. Mr. Mann explained a lot about how this was a gray area, so it leaves me very unclear about 2%, 5%, 20%, 15%. What is this percent that will be deemed reasonable, knowing that if I come back and see you again, you won't be able to see the underlying information, as Mr. Ingalls said? So what is that reasonable rate?
I think if I understand that, and Mr. Ingalls, you can help me, that's one thing we don't necessarily want to have as public knowledge.
Agreed.
Okay.
So what will be the number?
I don't think we know that. Turn Ingalls.
Yeah, I'm not sure Mr. Mann attempted to pin it down that tightly. He identified some information that he did not have, that he really felt he needed to have to make a more positive recommendation. I would suggest that if a continuance is in order, you leave it to Mr. Mann and the applicant to have those private conversations and to help Mr. Mann come up with the best recommendation he can, again, without disclosing that proprietary information. So I don't think you want to dictate as a board right now what that percentage is going to be. I think you want to free up your financial consultant to get a complete picture of the questions he still has, the answers to those questions, and come back with a recommendation.
Ms. Murphy?
As a representative of the applicant, we will agree to the continuance, but I just want to emphasize here, and probably will have to do so again, that it's very hard for us to meet an unknown criteria standard of best interests, reasonable rate, with no actual numbers identified by the decision makers. But yes, the applicant agrees to a continuance.
Very well, thank you. And I think you understand our situation too, where we want to protect you and we want to protect your investors, and that's not it. It's that, it is part of the criteria we have to address, but it's that subjectivity we're put in the position to decide on.
Yes, Commissioner, I understand. I thought the $15 million delta would be that number. This sounds like there's going to be a much more extensive sources and uses look and subjective determination by a non-elected official about the reasonable rate, and that's something I just want to say on the record, makes me a little uncomfortable, but we do agree to the continuance.
Those words are taken very well, and we appreciate that. Commissioners, I would like to ask Mr. Mann if he's acceptable to what we're requesting. Obviously, it would require more time. And I actually had another question for Ms. Murphy, but Mr. Mann, what we've addressed so far, it would require more of your time and attention. Would you be amenable to that?
We would.
Thank you, sir.
Would you want to ask him how long he would need?
Oh, yeah, and I wonder if that's a feasible thing for?
We will, we will, how long we need is dictated on the information that we receive, but we will do and work within a timeframe you give us. And if you say December 29th, or December 22nd, or January 5th, we will work to accommodate that.
Thank you, Ms. Mann. Ms. Murphy, given the timeframe that we're looking at and the reasoning as to why we have the concern for you, the applicant, on a continuance, I think it would be valuable for you, for us to hear from you, what is something you would like to hear before, bring it back for a continuance, before January 12th? Or would you be okay with something after January 12th?
Frankly, I have no idea what Mr. Mann is asking for, so I have no idea how long it will take my client to provide it. My preference would be to keep, my preference would be to have the most accurate information possible, so I'm in a very untenable position of having to estimate a timeline when I don't know what the request is. Best guess, I don't know what to say. I haven't been in this position in a public hearing to provide what I don't know in a timeline. So I'm not sure what Mr. Mann's going to ask for, and I'm not sure how long it'll take my client to prepare it.
So let me make this suggestion, because I know as a new commissioner, all three of us know as a new commissioner coming in, you get bombarded, and you're drinking on the fire hose. And I believe in the replacement is a very knowledgeable, intelligent individual, but I know it'd be quite a challenge. And as we've heard today, we've continued to continue that in before. And I would just propose to the board, I don't know if one week is adequate time for you to really get together. Mr. Mann is shaking his head no. So I'm thinking maybe we look at, look at January 5th as a possible date, and?
May I ask a question about that?
Oh, certainly.
Would we be required to republish and mail notice? I just want to be cognizant of those timelines.
Attorney Taggart is shaking her head.
And this is a continued item, so renotice would not be required. And if the applicant needs to consult with her client, there is one more item on the board's agenda, if that would be amenable. Mr. Ingalls can jump in if I'm out of line on that one.
So we could delay a decision on this application, go to the next item on our agenda, and come back to this agenda item?
Just if the applicant needs to talk to her client, if that would be helpful.
Okay.
I'm going to take that fig leaf, grab it, talk to my client, come back, and we'll agree to a date.
Okay. Very well. So it looks like?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. So just to clarify for the record, because I'm hearing Ms. Murphy's comments, and want to make it abundantly clear, that we are tying our requested option to continue this to our legal approval criteria. And specifically, it's number nine in our approval criteria with regard to the district being in the best interest of the area to be served. And again, the board may approve the First Amendment if evidence has been presented sufficient to demonstrate that. You did make the comment that you weren't sure what that meant or what that included. And let me just clarify, there's a very clear and articulate correspondence in the record from Elers that speaks to the issue of best interests, and I'm going to read that. So again, Mr. Mann says, "If the proponent's return on investment is greater than what would be deemed reasonable, either through lack of a project gap or being reimbursed for costs that would normally be paid through land sales, then the creation would not be in the best interests of the future taxpayers, as they would be unduly taxed to enrich the proponent." So I think that is abundantly clear, and the hope is, again, that in conversations with your client, you'll be able to work with our expert to provide information that can further support your application.
Thank you. Commissioner Layden?
Commissioner Layden.
Commissioner Partridge, would it be possible for me just to suggest that we schedule this for January 5th? And then if the parties cannot get it done by January 5th, they can request another continuance? But that way, we can continue on with our schedule, and they can continue on with their lives, and it still gives them the option. So I would recommend we do this January 5th.
The applicant's in agreement.
And so do we need to have you consult with your applicant? That we delay any decision on this application right now? Come back to after we hear our next item? Or do you feel you're ready to go on to January 5th?
My understanding is I'm agreeing to January 5th with the option to continue if we can't provide what I don't know we need to provide yet. But I will find out what we need to provide and provide it. That's my agreement.
Yes. And even though we cannot make a decision, what we would decide on January 5th to continue, we base that, and I think you've seen our, you know how we work.
Yes. Yes, the applicant's in agreement with that.
Okay, very well. Thank you.
I'm happy to give you a motion if you'd like.
You're telling me I can't leave early, aren't you?
The clock is ticking.
Very well. Yes, I think we're prepared for a motion.
Okay, I will make a motion to continue a resolution approving the First Amendment to this Seattle Metropolitan District Service Plan, project file SV 2020-002, until Tuesday, January 5th, 2021, at 2:30 PM.
So we have a motion and a second. And I will just clarify, sorry for the echo again, Commissioner, that January 5th is a Tuesday?
It is a Tuesday.
Okay, I see shaking heads, I didn't have the calendar, but, okay, very well. So you have a motion and a second, no further discussion? All in favor, state aye.
You know, Mr. Chair, I do just have some additional discussion on that, if you would indulge me. I just want to clarify for the record, I believe it is the position of this board, and certainly of Douglas County, based on our historic precedence, that we've been very supportive of both the free market and our metro districts. And part of our conversation today and our desire for a continuance is to be fair to other developers and fair to other metro districts, and make certain that we're providing and offering the same standard across the board, so that not one is getting particular benefits over the other. And I think it always benefits all of us to get more information.
Very well. Thank you, Commissioner Layden, excellent comment. No further comments? All in favor, state aye.
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 The motion passes. So this item will be continued to January 5th, 2021, at 2:30 PM. Thank you, everyone. Thank you again for all your patience and understanding as we work through these really challenging things and say, now I really feel obligated to make sure I'm here. All right, brings us on to our last item on our agenda.
Second to the last.
Oh, yes, second to the last, thank you. This is item 3C, Sterling Ranch Plan Development, Third Amendment, project file ZR 2020-018. Presenting for staff, Brett Thomas. And actually, is Brett on the line? Yes. And also with staff is Kurt Whiteknight.
Is the presentation visible?
Not yet, Brett. It may be, but we have a, it's the standards title page up.
Brett, start from first slide. Thank you.
Looks like you may be set, Brett.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. Brett Thomas, representing Plain Services. Request is major PD amendment to the Sterling Ranch PD, project number ZR 2020-018. Sterling Ranch LLC is the project applicant. The request is for a major amendment to the Sterling Ranch PD to modify a commitment pertaining to grade-separated wildlife crossings within Sterling Gulch Wildlife Corridor. This slide summarizes the intent of the PD, or rezoning intent. An amendment to a PD is considered a major amendment, subject to public hearings, when among other criteria, it involves substantial changes to the development standards or commitments, or changes in the allowed land use categories. This is a summary of the PD rezoning process. Douglas County Open Space and Natural Resources, in coordination with Colorado Parks and Wildlife, are supportive of the request and agree that mitigating wildlife conflicts elsewhere would be beneficial. That was comments received through the referral period. And then through the referral period, Plum Valley Heights HOA noted concerns with the compliance of major amendment approval standards, exhibit, and policies of the 2040 Comprehensive Master Plan. The Planning Commission considered the applicant's request for approval at a public hearing on November 16th. A summary of the Planning Commission hearing is included in the staff report packet. At the hearing, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the major PD amendment request, subject to one condition proposed by staff, by a vote of five to three. Sterling Ranch PD is generally west of the intersection of US Highway 85 and Titan Parkway, outlined in blue. The area affected by the proposed amendment is outlined in red on this slide. The grade-separated wildlife crossings are within the Sterling Gulch Wildlife Corridor, located in the eastern portion of the Sterling Ranch PD, north of the Plum Valley Heights subdivision. Sterling Ranch was rezoned from agricultural one, rural residential, and general industrial to PD with approval of the Sterling Ranch PD by the board in July of 2013. The PD was amended in July 2019 to add entertainment events as a principal use. That was the First Amendment. And the Second Amendment was continued on November 17th by the board in regards to a school site, and that item's currently scheduled for December 15th. The PD identifies two general locations for grade-separated wildlife crossings within Sterling Gulch Wildlife Corridor, as circled in red on this exhibit. Grade-separated crossings may be in the form of a culvert, thoroughfare bridge, or other means that would allow wildlife to make safe, grade-separated crossing. The Sterling Gulch Wildlife Corridor is a minimum 300 feet wide, insistent with Tier Two Wildlife Corridor designation in Section 9 of the Comprehensive Master Plan. The width of the wildlife corridor may be reduced at road crossings and grade-separated crossings that do not materially hinder wildlife movement through the corridor. The major amendment would allow for a modified openness ratio if a culvert is selected as the means to fulfill the commitment for grade-separated wildlife crossing. The amendment also proposes that a portion of the cost savings associated with modified culvert design shall be applied to future wildlife habitat enhancement projects in northwest Douglas County. The approval standards for a major PD amendment request are set forth in Section 15 enlisted on this slide. Staff's assessment of the approval standards are discussed in detail within pages six and seven of the staff report. Section 1522.08 of the zoning resolution sets forth parameters for the board's determination on the amendment request, as noted on this slide. Staff has evaluated the major PD request in accordance with Section 15 of the zoning resolution. Should the board find that the approval standards have been met, staff proposes the following conditions be included in the motion. Condition one, prior to recordation, all minor technical corrections will be made to the plain development document to the satisfaction of Douglas County. In condition number two, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public hearing and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in improving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available to take questions on the staff report this time if the board would like. Otherwise, Brock Smithles of Sterling Ranch is prepared to present on behalf of the applicants.
Thank you, Brett. Questions for staff at this time?
I have none, thank you.
And I have none at this time, thank you.
And likewise, I have none. Thank you, Brett, appreciate it. This time, Mr. Smithles, Mr. Brock Smithles, is he on the line?
I am. You on your way?
Very well. We're ready for you. Mr. Smithles?
Troy, can I, by chance, be able to share my screen for the presentation?
Certainly, one moment.
And Brock, if you know the routine of?
Adieu. Brock Smithles, on behalf of the applicant, S-M-E-T-H-I-L-L-S. My address is 8155 Finding River Avenue, Littleton, Colorado, 80125. And I apologize, Commissioner Partridge, I was actually on earlier when you asked if there was anyone on behalf of the applicant for the water or fuel, and ultimately, I just didn't get a chance to jump in there, but I appreciate the continuance.
No problem. Thank you.
So as Brett alluded to, this is a So, as Brett alluded to, this is the Third Amendment of the Sterling Ranch Plan Development. The background for this request, the Waterton Intergovernmental Agreement for Infrastructure Development was executed in September of this year, in which the CAB and the county are working together to accelerate construction of Waterton Road. Sterling Gulch Wildlife Corridor is a crossing of Waterton Road, and it is a mining crossing corridor for wildlife. Willow Creek, on the other hand, is a primary wildlife corridor, and that is being accommodated through a bridge. ERO, who's also with us this evening, as well as Colorado Parks and Wildlife, are both in support of this PD amendment, primarily because a portion of the cost savings will be recaptured for other wildlife habitat enhancements for better corridors elsewhere in Northwest Douglas County. And this next bullet point is to address concerns that were brought up by the Planning Commission, that the drainage design is really not changing as a result of this PD amendment. Page 22, Table 2 of the 2013 Sterling Ranch PD allows any kind of drainage facility within this wildlife corridor to begin with. Predominantly, what we're talking about is the wildlife crossing itself, and the county will still have the ability and the obligation to approve the roadway and drainage designs for Waterton Road in this corridor.
Mr. Smithles, excuse me.
Yeah.
On sharing your screen, we have a brown box that says, give subtitles a try, that is blocking your presentation.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Brock, start your slideshow from the beginning, we're seeing your notes page, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, if you don't mind us seeing your notes page, there we go, that looks like...
Okay, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Brock, we're still seeing your notes.
Why don't we apologize here, let me see if I can convert this to a PDF and we'll share in one second.
Brock, I have your PowerPoint up also, if that would be easier.
Yeah, why don't we do that, Brett, in the interim? I apologize why it's showing the whole presentation there. Why don't we do that, Brett, and I'll just tell you next slide. Actually, I have it working now, my apologies.
Brock, Brett has the presentation.
Okay. So what we're predominantly talking about is the wildlife crossing of the Sterling Gulch Corridor and predominantly the area of Waterton Road. Next slide, I think I... It is a minor wildlife corridor. As you can see, this is a map of the known wildlife corridors in Northwest Douglas County, predominantly around Sterling Ranch. The largest wildlife corridor contained within the property is Willow Creek, which you can see basically goes adjacent to filing three and then heads to the south of the property. The Sterling Gulch Wildlife Corridor is a minor movement corridor. Next slide, please. This was the old Sterling Ranch Plan Development, and it calculated what height-width-length ratio would be required. It's highlighted in the bottom, that such culvert would have an openness ratio at least equal to 1.5, the height multiplied by the width divided by the length. And then, Brett, next slide. Modifications are that if a modification is made to the original height-width-length ratio, that the cost savings of reducing that height-width-length ratio, a portion of that would be given to the county to be used for habitat restoration somewhere else in a more predominant wildlife corridor in Northwest Douglas County. And then, in addition to that, the amendment addresses the timing of that payment as either being the earlier four years after January 31st, 2021, or the recordational last final plat adjacent to this wildlife corridor south of the Excal parcel, which is a defined term in the original zoning. Next slide, please. Predominantly, this is what caused concern and why we are here this evening. In order to meet that length-with-height ratio for this minor wildlife area, what was being dictated by the drainage improvements in the corridor was a 13-foot, approximately 13-foot tall by 40-foot-long contact structure that would be underneath Waterton Road. And then, as you can see, coming out of both ends of that road crossing, there are substantial what are called head walls, or almost concrete retaining walls, in order to hold up the slope of the road and then match back to the drainage. And there was a concern collaboratively between ourselves and Douglas County staff over the maintenance that the county would incur with that, as well as the initial costs to construct that structure. And again, this was dictated as part of the drainage improvements. The area to the north of this wildlife crossing was designed in collaboration with urban drainage and now Mile High Flood Control District and Douglas County. Same thing with the drainage to the south. And so, this was kind of the resulting structures as a result of that length-with-height ratio. Next slide, please. What's being currently proposed under Waterton is a five-foot, excuse me, I believe it's an eight-foot-wide, fox culvert by five-foot-tall, the numbers are backwards on the slide, and it's about 120 feet of wing, of head walls, reducing the number of head walls and reducing the potential maintenance costs associated with this structure for the long term for the county, as well as the initial capital construction costs to build this structure. Next slide, please. This is a landscape architect's rendering of what that wildlife corridor would look like. We are maintaining the 300-foot width minimum, except for road crossings as stipulated in the PD, and this is kind of what that topography that I just showed you overlaid with some of the native landscaping that is planned would look like. Next slide, please. As far as the approval criteria, this amendment does not change the commitments or overall intent of Sterling Ranch Plan Development. And again, I believe that with Colorado Parks and Wildlife and ERO, our wildlife consultant being in support, I believe the belief is that there's a better place to spend these dollars in other wildlife habitat in Northwest Douglas County. Next slide. I noticed that it says the efficient development and preservation of the entire development, so I added emphasis there to approval criteria, too. We believe this amendment supports the overall vision of the Sterling Ranch PD and also promotes the efficient development by saving the residents of Sterling Ranch and Douglas County maintenance costs in the future. Next slide, please. This amendment will not have any foreseeable impact, we believe, on our neighbors. Wildlife corridor will remain intact as an open space entity, and wildlife will still be able to have a habitat there and is retaining the current width that was outlined in the original PD. Next slide, please. This amendment doesn't result in conferring a special benefit to any individual, and it may provide possible maintenance savings to Douglas County residents. Next slide, please. This amendment does not increase the intensity or density of land uses. Next slide, please. This amendment doesn't require any additional public facilities or services, and it, we believe, will save the residents of Sterling Ranch, capital costs, and Douglas County residents money on future maintenance costs. Next slide, please. And this amendment does not change roadway capacity or projected level of service in the community. I believe that's my last slide, but next slide, please. Yep. So if I, Ron Bean from ERO is available, should the Board have any questions? Otherwise, I'm happy to answer the Board's questions.
Thank you, Mr. Smithles. Questions for the applicant? Commissioner Layden, do you have any questions?
I do not, thank you, Mr. Chair.
This is Commissioner Thomas, I do have two questions. So, Mr. Smithles, you had a slide that said the payment could be made at two different times. I think one said four years after January of 2021, this is the payment back to the county. The other one was at the date of final recordation of something, do you have any idea when that could be?
I believe the intent, Commissioner, was to do the earlier of those two events. So, I believe there is concern that, in theory, we could plat all of the plats adjacent to this tributary without having made that payment, or that the last plat may last longer than four years. And so, the intent there is to be the earlier of the occurrence of one of those events, if that makes sense.
So we're looking at January of 2025, or...
The last plat that's platted adjacent to that. And you'll notice that it says in that sentence, "The owner or special district shall provide payments to the county for a portion of the cost savings to be negotiated with the county in the earlier of four years after January 31st, 2021," which would be January 31st, 2025, "or prior to recordation of the last final plat adjacent to the Sterling Gulch Wildlife Corridor." Does that make sense?
Well, so I'm trying to help, get you to help me understand what that date is, so that other date, could that be 15 years from now?
It could, but because it states the earlier of, it would be, the latest that it would occur would be January 31st, 2025.
Okay, so the reason I'm asking that question is, in our packet on page 627, is an email from Andy Howe, who works for the county, and he says, "There is no mention of the timeframe of the allocation of these funds toward other wildlife habitat enhancements. I would like to propose that the difference in cost be paid to the county in a timely manner, perhaps at the time of the culvert construction, so that the funding will be available for habitat enhancement projects in the near future."
And that was a response to initial, the initial submittal that did not include this timeframe that is stipulated currently in the proposed amendment. So, that response was in, in response to the initial submittal. The submittal was updated since then to add these dates that you see before you today. And the rationale for that is that, for example, as, in partnership with Mile High Flood Control Districts and Douglas County, the CAB is currently, and the developer are currently improving the wildlife habitat in Willow Creek as part of that channelization project. This timeframe that's outlined in this PD amendment, I believe, is fair, given the amount of drainage improvements and habitat restoration that is going on throughout the entire project, and will also allow the county and the applicant, or future applicants, to work on identifying those funds and what project those funds will go to in Northwest Douglas County.
So we're probably looking at four years before the citizens benefit from that, then, is what you're saying?
Well, I mean, the Sterling Ranch residents are benefiting, as is the county, from the reduction in costs of the structure, so I'd say the benefit is more immediate than that. The wildlife is benefiting through multiple projects across Sterling Ranch, but the, specific to this project, the capital component may be as long as four years out from next January 31st.
And that's when the county will get the difference from Sterling Ranch for allowing a smaller project? So, it's my understanding, we are approving a smaller project today, and in exchange, Sterling Ranch is offering to pay us the difference, pay Douglas County, is that right?
A portion, a portion of the difference, yes, not all of the difference, but a portion of the difference would be committed to Douglas County for habitat restoration projects, but not to be used for other purposes, but habitat restoration.
Okay.
And again, CPW is in, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, and I appreciate Ron Bean addressing this issue as well, but this is not a primary wildlife corridor, and was added during the PD towards the latter stages of the development PD, and ultimately, I believe, as is referenced in Colorado Parks and Wildlife, these dollars are better spent on other wildlife corridors.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smithles, I'm going to refer to our staff analysis of 1520.01, and maybe you can address this, if not, I can ask staff to. It talks about an openness ratio, the existing commitment requires a minimum openness ratio of 1.5 as calculated metric units. So, can you provide what the proposed openness ratio would be, then?
The proposed open ratio, openness ratio would be less than that. I will ask my colleagues to see if they can give me the exact number, but it will not, this particular crossing, there were three wildlife crossings that were requested to meet that criteria. One of those crossings has been removed as a result of concern of these interferences with wildlife. The other is Willow Creek, and the third is this channel, and ultimately, this PD amendment is requesting to reduce that openness ratio only on Sterling Gulch Wildlife Corridor, predominantly because it is not a primary wildlife corridor. And the cost savings associated with downsizing that openness ratio, a portion of which will be shared with the county to do habitat restoration. Again, I believe that's why Colorado Parks and Wildlife is in support of this application.
Okay, and I guess I should go further along, but in your PD, Section 4-3, it allows for modifications, so maybe we can discuss that, because it is brought up, but can we discuss the modifications? And I could ask staff that same question, but I figured you'd be able to answer that also.
Yes, so the modifications that are requested is specific to, in Section 4.3, they are specific to Sterling Gulch only, so they do not apply to Willow Creek as an example, it's only this wildlife corridor. And Brett, if you go back... And Brett, if you go back to that previous slide, I can, yeah, so this shows the primary corridor is Willow Creek, there's a secondary corridor, and Sterling Gulch that you can see is actually crossing more road. And ultimately, you'll go to the original language with the openness ratio. It stipulated an openness ratio in the original Sterling Ranch PD for Willow Creek, a primary wildlife crossing, and Sterling Gulch, a secondary or minor movement corridor. And what we're asking for is to differentiate the two based on what the wildlife experts say, like Colorado Parks and Wildlife and ERO, and take the cost savings associated, or a portion of those cost savings, and use those for other habitat restoration in some of these other primary corridors. Brett, you'll go to the original language and then to the amendment, I can show this. So Commissioner Partridge, your point on the culvert openness ratio is highlighted at the bottom of this slide. As at least equal to 1.5, the Willow Creek proposed bridge span will far exceed that, I believe. But what is being requested is to reduce that openness ratio on this crossing in particular due to the design constraints that I showed earlier of the wing walls and the ultimate maintenance and construction costs associated with this on a minor wildlife corridor.
So read the 4.3, section 4.3, as you have up. So it states that either the Willow Creek or the Sterling Gulch will at least have that minimum openness ratio. And what you're saying is, even though the proposed Sterling Gulch openness ratio would not be up to 1.5, you're saying the Willow Creek, then that would mean that the Willow Creek openness ratio would be 1.5 or greater?
Yes, we are, we are currently working with Douglas County to design the Willow Creek, which again is the primary wildlife corridor in Sterling Ranch, to meet or exceed this 1.5 openness ratio. And our requesting this PD amendment to save the county long-term maintenance, to save the CAB and Sterling Ranch residents' taxpayer dollars to construct a very expensive, very difficult-to-maintain structure to meet this over Sterling Gulch, when, again, Colorado Parks and Wildlife and ERO are both in support of, using those, at least a portion of those dollars somewhere else in Douglas County.
So I had a little hard time hearing that for sure, but just to clarify that, but at least it looks like the Willow Creek corridor will be an openness of 1.5 or greater?
It will.
Okay.
Yes, it will.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Mr. Chair, I do have a couple of thoughts and questions, if possible.
Please.
Please. Thank you. So, you know, one of the items that was interesting in the packet was the vote of the Planning Commission, five to three. And I'm wondering if staff or the applicant can speak to some of the objections raised by those that did not in vote in favor of the application, and specifically, the first and third approval standards, and their view that those particular standards had not been met and was not consistent with the intent of the Sterling Ranch PD.
Sure, Commissioner Layden, I can try to address that. So the first is that the openness ratio stipulated in the, in the PD, and this is coming from ERO, and Ron can address this, is generally for large ungulates, meaning deer and elk. However, the identified primary wildlife corridors for those large mammals is shown on that slide that Brett had pulled up with the corridors. So one of the issues was the commitment of, you know, is this a wildlife corridor? And the answer is, it is a wildlife corridor, but predominantly not for as many ungulates or these large mammals that need that large an openness ratio. The other issue that was, that was brought up by planning commissioners with their, their votes to recommend Nile, was that this was a drainage project. And that is why I included in my slides that the Sterling Ranch PD actually has drainage projects in all the wildlife corridors, predominantly wildlife follow drainages. And so the project, while it is a drainage project, is allowable under the existing PD. We're not changing the commitment to have these drainage structures in there. It's actually stipulated in our PD that these drainage structures can and will be in there. And that, that point, I guess, was lost on some of the planning commissioners, but that, they felt that we might be trying to turn what was this, you know, pristine wildlife quarter that had no drainage structures into a drainage system. And in fact, it was a drainage system before we developed and our zoning contemplated it would be a pretty major drainage system. And so we're now trying to accommodate the crossing of Waterton, as well as the best thing, we believe, for wildlife in investing in other habitat restoration elsewhere in the county that, that actually could use those dollars versus this specific location. But that, that's probably the best answer I have for that question about the planning commission and where those commissions were coming from.
Okay. Thanks for that insight, Mr. Smithles.
No further questions for the applicant? Okay. Very well. Thank you, Mr. Smithles. Appreciate it. At this time, Mr. Smithles, did you want your ERO consultant to make any comments?
You and Brett. I would like to have Ron just say a few words about this, this crossing. I may ask for Matt Williams from staff as well to just discuss some concerns that, that were mutually brought up about future potential maintenance of the drainage structures as well.
Okay, very well. Mr. Bean, long time, no see. Would you mind stating your name, spelling of your last name, and your address for the I think you might be muted. We might have to work it on our end.
Mr. Bean, you are unmuted.
We're still unable to hear you, Mr. Bean.
Mr. Bean, go up to the top of your screen and choose a different audio, and in the meantime, we could possibly hear from Matt Williams.
Would he go to the three dots at the top of the screen, Troy, if that's what he has?
Mr. Bean, at the top of your screen, along the menu bar, it says audio and video, and you can choose an alternative source. You click on that.
Can you hear me now?
There you are.
Yes, Ron Bean, Senior Wildlife Biologist, ERO Resources. We're at 1842 Clarkson Street in Denver. Last name is spelled B-E-A-N-E. 1842 is my business address. My personal address and where my business is right now is 8114 Leveres. So I'm familiar with these corridors. If the figure that shows those major and minor wildlife corridors could be brought
So I'd like to speak to this for a little bit. So to have an effective wildlife corridor, you need a area that they're, that they're moving from and an area that they're moving to. So that's what connects conserved or high-quality habitat areas. It's the corridor that connects that. It's a major connector. So if you look at this map, it shows public lands. And on the western side, you have Roxborough and Sharp-tail Ridge, open space, and quite a bit of open space, Roxborough Park that follows Willow Creek, and then it gets into the private lands, and that's where that major arrow with the, the large arrow with the wildlife corridor that then goes through and almost completely connects it to Chatfield State Park. So that, that's a, a high-value major corridor. The other one, if you looked at south of the development, if you look at a regional scale where there's two large arrows and arrows and a smaller one, and you can actually see where the, the elk range is, the large ungulate range is, and the hatch markings. But again, we're connecting Roxborough State Park with Douglas County open space areas, actually goes through Leveres and eventually connects to Plum Creek and Cherokee Ridge on the east. And, and that's the reason why with the 85 corridor that's under construction now has some wildlife underpasses going on there to provide that major corridor. And then you could contrast that to Sterling Gulch, and I say it's more of a connector than a corridor. It starts at Plum Valley Heights, which is a fenced area, actually a double fence with an equestrian pathway in it. It goes just about a mile, and where the wildlife was actually moving, and this was in 2007, we were looking at this, they were following the power line, transmission line to get connection to Plum Creek. The other option is to go straight into Titans. So you're, we're not, you don't have a conservation area on either end that it's connecting to, since, since 2007, there's been quite a few changes in this area, more roads been expanded, the southern connector's gone in there. The southern connector did include wildlife underpasses to accommodate those large mammal movements that are to the south of Sterling Ranch. But this area in is that graphic showed the rendering, the landscape rendering, that there will be private habitat, there will be animals that will be moving up and down this area. There will primarily be the smaller animals, red foxes, raccoons, and things that can accommodate, this culvert can accommodate. I walked all of Sterling Gulch about two weeks ago, walked up and down in both directions, trying to look, and this isn't a scientific study, but I was looking for indicators of wildlife use, including scat, you know, droppings and things, trails, tracks, game trails and things, anything along that line. I did not see any game trails, very few tracks. I saw four small piles of deer and elk droppings, and, and this has probably been there for several months since it's been such a dry year. So again, it's a very minor connector. It's not a major corridor. There's better places to spend money to benefit wildlife, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. Any further comments?
I have none, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Smithles, did you request staff person Matt Williams to comment?
Yes, I, as Douglas County staff has been involved in, in the design of this crossing and this corridor, one of the issues that was brought up was concern with maintenance on, on the actual structure that was, was looked at, and I was hopeful that Matt could at least chime in on that briefly for the board's information.
Certainly, Mr. Williams has some information off for the board. We appreciate it.
Good evening, Commissioners. Matt Williams with Engineering. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Matt.
Great. We have been involved in discussions with Sterling Ranch regarding the design of, really, you know, we looked at it through an engineering lens, and so I'll call it a drainage crossing. Obviously, it's in the PD specified as a wildlife crossing. And, you know, we were a bit concerned with the original proposal to accommodate the wildlife crossing. When it comes to maintenance, you look at a couple of different things. Obviously, size of structure is, is one of those things you look at. And so if you look at a comparison from the original proposal, which was a con span designed that was 42 feet wide by 11 feet tall, and then the length of it was 60 feet with an opening in the middle, and then another 60 feet, and then the, the very large headwalls, of which there were four of them, each of them about 30 to 35 feet long. So, you know, you look at that much concrete under a roadway, and there's, there's a lot there to maintain. Versus their, their current proposal, which is an eight-foot by five-foot reinforced concrete box culvert. Now, it's going to be quite a bit longer, but, you know, Douglas County has a long history of maintaining reinforced concrete box culverts and bridges. The original proposal was a con span, which is a proprietary crossing that I believe ConTech Engineering Solutions came up with. And we have no familiarity with that structure, and I'm not here to say that, that it wouldn't last a long time, or that it would. It's just that we don't have the experience in the construction and/or the maintenance of a structure like that. And considering the importance of Waterton Road and the need to keep that road open and make sure that, that we have as little disruptions in the, the passage of traffic for that road, we were certainly in agreement with, with going with a type of system that we're more comfortable maintaining. And we also believe that ultimately, in the long run, the maintenance of the proposed eight-foot by five-foot reinforced concrete box culvert would be cheaper to maintain for the county.
Thank you, Matt. I think the board appreciate that, because I know you had, there was reference in our staff report regarding the, I guess, support from Engineering to look at this. So appreciate your additional comments for clarity.
You're welcome. Thank you.
If there's nothing further from the applicant? We will go on to, I will open it up for public comment or testimony regarding the application. Is there anyone in the room or online who would like to address the board regarding this application? No one in the room? Ms. Dunning, anyone online?
I have no hands raised, Commissioner.
Very well. It will close public comment testimony, and if there's no further addressing to the board, and no further questions for the applicant, bring it into board discussion deliberation.
I would just like to add that Matt Williams just gave me some really great information and summed up what I think about this. And of course, I'm going to say that I wish the county was getting paid money more, getting paid, so the savings sooner than four years from now. Excuse me, I think there's great advantages here, and I will be in support of this.
You know, I will also be in support. I think it's really beneficial to see that the applicant has worked hard to amend the application to the satisfaction of Colorado Parks and Wildlife, the Plum Valley HOA, certainly open space, and staff. And I do rely upon many of the, the comments made by staff in the application indicating that this is consistent with the comprehensive master plan and the approval standard. So I will be in support as well.
Very well, and I too, and I believe our approval standards have been met under section 1520 of our zoning resolution, so. resolution. So this time, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, before we get a motion, I'm going to, Mr. Smithles, there were two conditions presented in the staff report. Are you in agreement with the two conditions as presented?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, if there's no further discussion and the board is prepared, I will make a motion to approve the Sterling Ranch Plan Development Third Amendment with the two conditions as presented, project file ZR 2020-018.
Second.
We have a motion and second. No further discussion? All in favor, state aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Smithles. Thank you. Brings us to, now we're on our last item. Maybe we need to take a recess, but Kim's like, no, you don't need to take a recess. No. Item 3D, Resolution supplementing the 2020 adopted budget to appropriate unanticipated revenue news and appropriate assigned, inappropriate assigned and unassigned fund balances in an amount of $16,117,053. Presenting for staff, Kim Hirsch, Business Manager, Budget Manager.
Good evening. Usually, it's an afternoon, but this one's been a lengthy one, so I'll try to go quick for you, too, and Commissioner Layton online. I'd like to formally present the fourth and final supplemental for 2020. The total amount of the request for your consideration today is $16,117,053. More specifically, the supplemental request will be increasing appropriations for revenues that have been received since the formal budget adoption, allow for unspent grant and project dollars to be carried forward into the current fiscal year, and appropriate fund balance for new initiatives that have arisen since January 1st. I will quickly go through some of the larger requests by fund, and I'll be happy to try to answer any of your questions at the end of the presentation. The general fund is $6,56,441. Of this amount, $723,503 are for new revenues for which spending authority must be appropriated prior to the funds being spent. I'm requesting $300,000 of unassigned fund balance for a possible contingency needs as the budget teams moves into the year-end compliance exercises. And lastly, the Board of County Commissioners has graciously approved additional spending authority in the amount of $5 million to help offset some of the economic hardships as they relate to COVID-19 pandemic. The Human Services Fund is requesting $2,838,371 for additional revenues that have been received from the state of Colorado. These funds will go towards the programs of child welfare, food assistance, low-income energy assistance programming, and juvenile justice services. The Law Enforcement Authority Fund, $1,593. Of this amount, a donation in the amount of $1,351 was received from St. Francis Church that was received in late 2009 and subsequently rolled into the year-end fund balance. So this donation is now being pulled from the fund balance and going towards the purchase of clothing and uniforms for the K-9 unit. The Road Sales and Use Tax Fund, $2,100,000. This additional spending authority is being requested at this time to offset $500,000 in new revenues that have been received via the 1.01% collection of sales tax throughout Douglas County. These funds will go towards the increased sharebacks that are due to the local municipalities of Parker, Larkspur, Casserock, Lone Tree, and Castle Pines. Another $1.6 million of assigned fund balance is being requested to help offset the costs associated with advancing the Meridian Intersection Improvement Project. These funds will be used for utility relocations and the designing and building of the first phase of the Lincoln-Havana Meridian Intersection. The Justice Center Sales and Use Tax Fund, $800,000 of new revenues received from sales tax, which is trending 5.8% above budget through September, needs to be appropriated in order to make the transfer to the general fund to offset the costs associated with the operations of the detention facility. Included in this transfer, including this transfer, the new amended budget for the Justice Center Sales and Use Tax Fund will be $29,249,100. The Open Space Sales and Use Tax Fund, $352,500. Of this amount, $225,000 will be offset by increased revenues, once again from the sales tax revenue. And another $127,500 of assigned fund balance is being requested to help pay for the costs associated with the Sandstone Ranch and the Smith Property Conservation easements. The Park Sales and Use Tax Fund, $3,000 of new revenues will need spending authority prior to the funds being spent. A donation from R. Ferguson was received in the last few months and will enable the Parks Department to make local improvements throughout the county. The Rocky Mountain High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Fund, $1,949,404, in various modifications that have been approved by the Board of County Commissioners throughout the year and need the spending authority prior to the funds being spent. And finally, the three self-insurance funds need additional spending authority in the following amounts. The Employee Benefits Fund, $482,424. Liability and Property Insurance Fund, $786,320. The Medical Self-Inurance Fund, $747,000. With this final supplemental, the 2020 amended budget will end the current fiscal year in the amount of $543,072,027. This is, this amount is a 17.3% increase over the 2020 adopted budget. And I do want to make the note, although this amount seems rather, rather large, I want to remind the board and the listening audience that of this amount, 47%, or almost half of that increase, is completely offset by new revenues that have been received. That formally concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions that you may have. Other than that, I am ready to go.
Questions for Kim?
So, Kim, I always like to ask you and reinforce what the total budget is for the county, because this number is amazing. It is over a half a billion dollars.
It is.
Million, right?
Did I say million?
You said thousand.
Million. Yeah, it's $543,072,027.
Great.
There you go.
Amazing. Thank you, and you managed that for us very well. Thank you, you and your team.
Ms. Dunning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I don't have any questions, primarily because Kim and her team are so wonderful at providing all of the information and answering our questions in our work sessions and going through all of this with us. I really appreciate the hard work during this difficult year and just appreciate where we're headed from here.
Thank you. Kim, you might have heard it wrong, but I thought it was referencing the LEA Fund. I think you were referencing the $1,351 donation from St. Francis, and I thought or heard it was in 2009, but it was...
No, it's 2019. We received it late in the year, weren't able to spend it, rolled into fund balance, and now I'm pulling it back out.
Okay. Minor, but I didn't want anybody to, if they were listening, heard 2009, and maybe I heard it wrong. Thank you. Wonderful job. And just last note, whoever R. Ferguson is, we just want to give them a...
Thank you.
...an appreciation for their $3,000 contribution to Parks. That was wonderful. So great to see the citizens step up.
Yes, Scott was very, Scott and Kurt were very appreciative, or Scott, Steve were very appreciative of that. That doesn't typically happen.
Kim, thanks for hanging in there with us and doing a great job presenting everything. And this is, no further supplemental budgets for the year projected?
No.
Fingers are crossed.
I will be before you next Tuesday presenting the 2021 budget.
All right.
So we're kicking it off.
So we've got what?
A week.
You know, six.
A week, and I'll be before you doing the next year's budget.
All right. You do a wonderful job. Thank you, Kim. This time, I'll open up for anyone in the audience who would like to address the board regarding the supplemental budget. There is no one in the room? And Ms. Dunning, anyone online who would like to address the board?
I have no online attendees, sir.
This time, we'll close public comment or testimony and bring it back to the board for any further questions, deliberations, and/or motion.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion to approve a resolution supplementing the 2020 adopted budget to appropriate unanticipated revenues and appropriate assigned and unassigned fund balances in the amount of $16,117,053.
Second.
We have a motion and second. No further discussion? All in favor, state aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That concludes all the items on our agenda. We are adjourned.